So I have this one too.
Mm-hmm.
The original one.
Yep.
You can pull up. Just let me know, I can switch over to it.
Hello folks, could I have your attention? I'd like to call the order of the workshop for October 16th, 2023. First up on the agenda, thank you Phil, is Winter Oaks Concept Plan Development Summary. I'm gonna turn it over to Glenn and Zach and let you all go for it.
Thank you, Council, Mayor, Administration. Appreciate the time this evening. Just to open this up, first of all, Zach's gonna be doing the presentation this evening and introducing some of his partners that have been able to come in tonight that we've been working with over the last few weeks. This actually is a piece of property that the city's owned for quite some time and was originally approved as a subdivision for 200 units. If you want to show, this was the original layout for a subdivision on this property. So just to give you an idea, this was back in the 90s when this was actually approved to be built and then obviously some financial things happened and that didn't happen. So we've cut it back to 100 and we've used a lot of other things that he's gonna talk about and discuss this evening. This is a plan, this is not moving forward. We do have, a lot of people put a lot of time in so far, but it's a big collaboration and it's all response to a potential federal grant that could bring us the money to pay for all the infrastructure for this. So with that said, I will turn it over to Zach and he can introduce some of the people in the audience that are here to, that have been a big part of this so far.
Good evening, let me go back to where we were. This is what we've been trying to do within our entitlement funding and the rest of our, the rest of our department lately is not just addressing some of the other stuff that we've been talking about when it comes to homelessness, but really trying to target housing and housing development with our entitlement funds in the best way that we can leverage new ideas and new models to move that forward. One of the opportunities that came up the day before President Biden landed at Auburn Airport was the announcement of the Pro Housing Pathways to Removing Obstacles to Housing Grant opportunity, which is one of the few opportunities we can use CDBG funds, funds like CDBG funds to create new housing. Traditionally, that's something that is not allowed. So when we got that, it was a two-month turnaround before we reach the grant deadline by the end of the month, so we knew we couldn't do it alone. We pulled in some very key players. Primarily, our developer, Fatuma Hussain, has stepped up and created Homes For All LLC and her development, her development advisors are gonna be helping manage the development side of it and then the lease-up and the monitoring that the federal funds would require. Additionally, because of where it's located and because we've already had a working partnership with Andrus Goggan Land Trust, it was definitely key to bring in them and also try and use this as an opportunity to create a model where housing development isn't, isn't the antithesis of conservation and something that will incorporate, it'll work well with the ALT property that's next door. We can leverage some assets to help some of that development as well as incorporate some more open green space within the project itself. YMCA again is a, is an amazing partner to work with that can create new affordable childcare. It's another thing that we've seen on our community surveys and people have been asking for new opportunities and new resources for childcare within the community. And then Andrus Goggan EMA, we did work with EMA. We hosted here in City Chambers earlier this year for the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Within some of those conversations, we really realized that we could benefit from having more opportunities for new locations for some emergency warming and cooling centers on days it's too hot, too cold, something that we can leverage and again, work with our partners at EMA to develop and leverage more funding for those developments. So we do have Steve Wallace, the CEO of YMCA of Auburn-Louisville here, as well as Amy Soper from ALT, Fatuma Hussain from Homes For All, as well as Dana Totten. And they've been great partners, helping us put some of this narrative, some of the needs and some of the resources together for this application. And we do have additional project partners, Community Concepts has stepped up, Auburn Housing we are working with. We have support coming from Main State Housing Authority and Andrus Goggan Savings Bank. So what we have taken was the original plan from the 90s and really pared it back based on the property that's, that's been put into conservation as well as finding a way to thin down what was there from a density point of view. And then create really a project that will primarily focus on homeownership as, as our end goal. A lot of the fundings we have, even within rental unit development, we get to work with our local housing authority, Auburn Housing, and part of what we have to report on is what we're really doing to help move people towards homeownership as an end goal. So we didn't wanna just start with a, a housing development that is gonna be primarily rental. We wanted people to be local, they wanted to be, you know, have their buy-in as property owners and from our point of view, that's something that also starts to create generational wealth for some of these first-time homebuyers to be able to go out and start to invest in something that, that they can hand down to their families or that they can utilize and that currently today is cheaper than rental rates that we've been seeing. So the development is still in concept plan. We're looking at taking a portion of the original 1990s plan and working through code on the utility of some of these shared access driveways for some of these backlots, finding an effective way to create these 48 single-family residences, still keeping some of the original duplex designs, but also incorporating some open green space for ALT and that'll allow them to develop more outdoor education center, stuff that they can't do on their existing conserve, conserved parcel as well. Those are key aspects to it as well. So all of the outer side of it is still going to be sold off as part of the end user. These are going to be homeowners, these are going to be Auburn residents that are going to own the house that they're in. That's our primary focus here. We are keeping that center island as a three-unit mixed-unit building, which will have daycare, it will have facilities for daycare for YMCA to operate as well as the space for our community center, something that can double as an emergency shelter or something that people can utilize so that it does have a better community benefit. Any questions so far?
What is the height of the Monty Williams building?
Three-story. Counselor.
Thank you. I know part of what used to be the Skilens property, I think, is mixed into this whole conglomeration and part of it was a wetland. What are you gonna do with the wetland? Are you going to try to get rid of the wetland? We've moved two other wetlands into that.
That I believe is on the ALT property currently and that is not gonna be touched. What we wanna do is, is make sure that, A, we met some of the conditions set forth in the grant so that we actually have a very viable option to, to get some of this funding. Is it a very competitive grant? It's $85 million nationwide. We're going for nine and a half to try and cover the install for the public roads, water, sewer, gas utilities and getting those in the ground. Those have really been, what the program was designed for is to meet the shortfall of some of the costs that we've been seeing, the increase in development costs and why some of these projects have stalled other places around the state. But we also knew that in order to integrate it better within the community, we wanna create a model that actually does have a broader community benefit. We're really not just walking in here to create housing. I know that's not what the developers are looking for and nor are the partners that we're working with. We wanna really create more of a, a community-centered focus. Part of that is not just the homeownership for 56 new homeowners. That includes owner-occupied duplexes as an opportunity. Again, it's almost a second-tier possibility for families to start creating intergenerational wealth. And then the mixed-income developments. There's a big portion within this grant and this is what we've really tried to start working in and is still something we're working through, is advancing racial equity by deconcentrating the minority populations within the city as well as affirmatively marketing to really make sure that we make it a mixed-income development. So we're looking at a ballpark, 70% of the houses and the apartments will be to HUD-qualified low-income households. It's different for this grant than our traditional entitlement funds and that's where I get super fun to talk about, so if you have any questions, we will talk through that. What we do get to do within it is integrating into where the current facilities really drop off, continuing the bike lanes, continuing the sidewalks up into the community and part of our pledge to ALT as well is to make sure that we have an opportunity to get some of the, not just like cars and parking capability to access that property for future hiking trails, but also integrate the bike lanes and the sidewalks and really bring the outdoors to a housing development. Homes For All again, this is a premier development project that we're taking on. Fatuma's put together an awesome team, including Dana Totten, as well as Kevin Bunker and the Genesis Community Loan Fund and Technical Assistance. Public access regarding ALT, is that a question? Nope. We've been working with them to figure out the right way to fit new housing into something that is conservation land and make sure that we're being good neighbors and we're creating something that integrates but also supports the continued development and that does include the walking trails. This is something that would be part of the development that is on ALT property as, as a phase of the project that would establish accessible facilities and trails through ALT property and also integrate it into the housing side of it and continue some outdoor education opportunities, places that they can actually put on their programming and make an educational resource as well. Community building as well. Childcare, especially for workforce housing, is definitely essential and within that neighborhood, being able to fill that extra gap, especially with the potential new families coming in. YMCA has stepped up and is looking to utilize some of the space within one of the multi-units to offer subsidized childcare to residents, but also to the greater population of, of New Auburn and Auburn in general. That also includes transportation opportunities to make sure that yes, this is not a downtown-centric location, but that we, we are focusing on transportation. We've started working with YMCA as well as Wester Main Transportation to make sure that we have transportation integrated into the plan of the facilities. And then lastly, we were talking about the emergency shelter. Our current systems, our current places are really centrally located, they're very accessible downtown and by working with EMA, we do have the opportunity to utilize some of the brick funding and, and some funds that can help offset some of the additional costs of the development for generator backup, making sure that we have these places built in a way that it's actually intended for. Emergency, emergency resources, backup power, heating, so that we can accommodate residents of the greater community in case of long-term power outages or other instances in which we have to stand up an emergency shelter.
And you'll have a kitchen, right?
It's part of the plan. Hundred of them.
Would you go back to the 70% and explain a little more about that so we know a little more detail?
Specifically, what exactly is HUD sales price?
Yeah, that's, I'm curious about that.
I can move forward to that, cuz we're gonna get to that. So I will get to that in like one slide.
Okay, the other question is, will we work with the public transportation, the purple bus for instance? How about getting from Auburn to Portland if they need, if we're gonna have the working people coming and going?
So, um, transportation is a key part of this as, you know, any plan we're gonna be putting together. So we have talked with the Director of Transportation, he's been involved in this conversation. We've reached out to West Main Transportation, so you know, and again, this is a long-term project, it's not gonna happen tomorrow and all these things will come up through the public hearings and obviously Planning Board and all those other things, but yes, transportation is a key aspect to this.
Quick overview, it is a short turnaround for our funding source. The upside in what we saw when we were really starting to weigh ourselves on how, how competitive we can be in this grant is the fact that Auburn has already done a lot of the things that this grant is specifically asking for. Traditionally, most of the other applications that we've seen people file are really based on policy and zoning changes that the city's already done a lot for. That really puts us into a better, more impactful application and that's another thing that we're really banking on. We've already, Eric and the Planning and Permitting Department and the Council has already put us in a much better position when it comes to being able to move projects like this forward that actually meet the inclusivity and, and the intentions of furthering fair housing within the city. So we are not playing catch-up like some of the other applicants. What we've seen that's really been pushing it, clearly we've started demonstrating ahead of time some of the impacts that we've been seeing when it comes to our homelessness data, our general assistance data. We are seeing dramatic increases and it's, it's clearly not just us. Again, we've been growing to meet some of the needs within our department from a homeless service provider aspect of it and we're doing this more efficiently now, again, working with Housing Resources for Youth, Immigrant Resource Center of Maine, Community Concepts, Tri-County, Rumford Group Homes. These are all organizations that we've brought into the Community Development Department that co-locate with us and we're providing better services and it's also allowing us to really better assess the needs of people and be able to respond, but also create the data that we need to apply for money. Without being able to provide some of that upfront service and be able to quantify what it is our needs are, then we don't stand a good chance for, for attracting some of these other funding sources and this is what we've been doing through those other communications. The Council has also stepped up with a bunch of funding opportunities between ARPA and some of our Home Dollar programs for creating new units, but again, it's a drop in the bucket and you'll see based on what the unmet need that we are meeting. Like Glenn mentioned, this is not a project that is impulsive by any means. We really took something off the shelf from 1990 and really tried to clean it up and make it better fit the needs of today, of the community as well as of the funding source, in this case, the Pro Housing application. We still have a long public process to go through within the application process and that does involve a lot more community meetings. Again, we're bringing Andrus Goggan Land Trust into the designing phase as well to make sure that this really fits the need and the community that we're really looking to place this within. And we do have even more studies coming in, we have the 1990 Planning Board approval of the plan, we've got water and sewer studies that prove that there is capacity, there's almost too much capacity on some senses and we do have more recent traffic studies that are coming through demonstrating the capacity for the roads out there to handle the new population. The HUD funding priorities for the grant and really why we believe that we can make a valid and competitive argument for leveraging these funds to have this type of impact. What we're looking at here is the Climate Economic Justice Screening Tool. They give us a list of tools within the grant application and tell us, you know, utilize this data to really start allowing them to compare apples to apples. HUD is going to prioritize funding that is just increasing housing production. We're not just doing zoning that makes for potential housing development. We can walk in and say, we're gonna create X number of new affordable housing units within the five-year period of this. We're not just changing policy, we're actually putting shovels to the ground. I mean, we're doing it to target communities and, and percentage of the population that are 100% of the area median income. This is where it's a little different than our regular entitlement funds, which are usually at 80%. This 100% allows us to really start tapping into some of that middle, middle-income residence that don't traditionally get served by our programs and we see a lot of it in our community where they come in and they really do have a need to work with our office, but they still make too much and we'll see on the next slide where that, where that line is. But when it comes to the Auburn Downtown District, this is where we're really looking to place the Winter Oaks development, A, on city-owned property, but also to, to make sure that we are meeting the need of the grant program and also all of our HUD funding that comes with the, the impetus that we really need to use the funds to better address fair housing opportunities and that largely is deconcentrating affordable housing projects. We are not going to take an affordable housing project and build it in the middle of a very impoverished community, a very high-population, low-income community because that's not what HUD wants us to do with the money and it's not necessarily an equitable approach to community development. So you can see our downtown district is 98th percentile when it comes to low-income population. Same thing with the very downtown Lewiston districts, we're looking at roughly 99th percentile, 92nd percentile. We have a very low income concentration and when you start looking at the, the lead data we have, the majority of the houses that we have built within those districts are pre-1939. This isn't 1968 lead paint, this is even older than that. These are inefficient and inefficient units that have created through the market a concentration of poverty and we're really looking to start to balance that and to better integrate it within other parts of the community. This is where we're really gonna figure out what affordable is and again, the feds have the ability to classify tomato as a fruit, as a vegetable instead of a fruit, so this is how they, they get to classify affordable. Traditionally, the 80% AMI, it's area median income, it's numbers that they update every year. This is what we get to use when we can qualify whether or not we can help someone or the Auburn Housing does when they're providing housing vouchers. This grant allows us to go a little bit higher, but we get to do some self-reflection, see where we fit in this table and see really where, where we, you know, what type of quality of life you can, you can have with some of this income and then really how the feds think whether or not you're low-income or not. Again, we land back into our high home rents. This is the max that we can pay for rent when we're helping someone. This is the max that somebody can pay, so rents are dramatically higher than this right now, so we do have a lot of people that are coming to us for help, they income-qualify, but their landlords are charging too much rent, therefore we can't help them with a dollar and that, that does make it difficult. That does include utilities, so if you're paying your electric, your rent needs to be lower than that. A two-bedroom, less utilities would be about $9.50 a month and those are not the prevailing rates we've seen. We are working with another Bates class to do a better housing assessment and we'll have some of that data hopefully before January. And then lastly, this is where the, the HTF sales price is the Housing Trust Fund's sales price. This is what HUD says is the maximum we're allowed to charge for a house if we put their money into it. So this is really what we're going to be selling those units for. They, they do have to be affordable on the other side and this is where some of these extra subsidies come in or where we remove some of that extra cost by having a grant to cover nearly $10 million of infrastructure costs that a developer would potentially be asking for on the backside. This is some of the older data that we've been using from earlier this year, based on that previous table on housing income and using our census data. We are looking at 75% of Auburn renters that qualify for subsidized housing. That is a lot. It's a high percentage. It's also 27% of Auburn homeowners that based on their mortgage, their property taxes and their housing insurance, they're paying more than 30% of their income based on being cost-burdened and the rates are much higher. We worked with Auburn Housing to get some data, trying to figure out what our unmet need would be based on how many Auburn residents do qualify based on income for subsidized housing and how many we actually have. And that would be both the Main State Housing Voucher Program as well as the Auburn Housing Choice Voucher Program. It's 26% of our rental units are affordable housing, which is a higher percentage based on what we do have, but we're still leaving about 2,200 in affordable units as an unmet need. And again, some more recent news from Andrew Rice and Robbie Feinberg about more increases based on the lack of the market side of it. This is where it gets a little bit more interesting and you can see some of the correlation, again, using some of the tools that they've, they've asked us to use in developing this program. You look at our minority concentration and this data is 2019, this is pre-COVID, this is pre-asylum influxes that we've seen recently within our offices. So this, this is still dated data. The HUD still works on 2019 census tract data for some reason, but until we get something better. We're looking at a 20% population downtown, same thing with downtown Lewiston. Our lower-income census tracts have the poorest housing quality, the oldest age and it's the lowest income and this is why we do not put more affordable housing in already underutilized neighborhoods. And it's also, it's, it's part of increasing that housing choice and, and increasing our inclusivity within our planned communities. After all, the hard work has been done in, in planning and permitting to open up some zoning. Lastly is really what we're looking for within the project itself and what we're putting forward based on preliminary numbers. Most of the city, what we are looking to put up is the property. It is city-owned property and then the personnel is mostly entitlement funding that our office is already utilizing. If we use these funds, if we complete this application and we are awarded and build it, we will be doing monitoring. So it's not just these upfront five years of development costs we'll be monitoring to make sure that the developer is maintaining the app, the accurate percentage of income demographics and that the, the houses that have been sold, if they are resold, that they're following our resale and recapture provisions that are all HUD-dictated, as well as utilizing some to-be-established TIF funding, again, to help with some of the operational costs, both to the school system locally as well as ALT, YMCA and what else did I miss? What do we got?
You definitely kept your game on your graphics and pictures earlier. Princess Bride one was.
That's why I'm here.
That's probably, yeah, never happened before in city council history. Is there any questions on this one? Comments, thoughts? Counselor Hawes?
Really quick question. With the application process that you're currently going through, is there any stipulation saying they need to be built, you know, type A versus type B? Are they, are they, or can you just build any type of unit that you want? Like, is there any specificity to it?
The hardest part is it has to meet local zoning. So we're not currently building 500 square-foot units.
Right, there's no, there's no current requirement within the grant that would tell you have to be a certain energy efficiency level or things like that. However, as, you know, the city really is the applicant making this whole, all happen, we can put a lot of those stipulations in ourselves if, if the council feels the necessary.
And so far, the zoning changes that have happened so far are actually benefiting, benefiting your application process, correct?
Correct.
Have, have you done any back-of-the-napkin kind of calculations on just how the HUD limits on the construction cost or the cost of the units versus the area meeting, area median income numbers?
Back of the napkin, yeah, we've looked at what, you know, we think that a unit will actually cost versus what we can be able to sell it for and put some of the, you'll see some of the subsidy numbers in the budget, that that's where that difference comes from. So we know, we may be somewhere between 50 and 125,000 in subsidy on some of that, on some of the units.
Counselor Tippes?
So, could you, could you talk over a little bit of what you've looked into so far for utilities in that area? I know that water and sewer are a primary concern, but it's, it's gonna be expensive to get that in, in that one spot.
So water and sewer are both very close to the property, so it's a matter of getting it through the property, which will then actually make it much easier for other properties beyond that to be able to access that. So water and sewer is, you write, the most important and obviously, we're looking to, you know, can we get the gas put in while we're out there and already dig in the trenches? So I've been having those conversations, but those are early stage. And then obviously electrical, I mean, would it be possible maybe to put this on the ground?
So I mean, this is interesting, just, it reminds me a little bit, I think to put this in a context, historically, two generations ago, municipalities funded infrastructure and then developers came in and they built houses. That's how New Auburn, that's how Lake Street's, that's how all of them were developed. And actually, the paper neighborhoods that are still are paper streets, that are still in the books for New Auburn, just were never built, but they're still, if you go onto our GIS system, you can actually pull that up, so it's still there. So we're kinda going back to when government funded the infrastructure and then developers came in and built the homes. So it's kind of interesting, full circle, how that's come about. Then, you know, the stipulations back when government was doing it was, it had to be tight, it had to be, you know, fairly good density, though this is a lot less dense than the initially-approved plan from the 90s for Winter Oaks. So what's the average lot size roughly? Are we looking at quarter-acre lots? Are we looking at quarter acre lots? I know, I know this is your, just, it's conceptual. I, I hate it. You can't put anything specific on, but just as a kind of an idea here, you know, I'm envisioning these are three bedrooms, one and a half bath, you know, starter homes on a pad with city water, city sewer and electric and probably not even gas. That's usually the first thing that's value engineered out now. But is there, if you could give us an idea of a neighborhood in which that would look like that currently exists?
Not that I know. I mean, I may, I'd have to work a lot more with the planning and permitting department to figure out what kind of fits and really what we can do on the density side.
So I completely stumped you.
Not, not our role.
Couple things. So this comparatively, or compare this to choice neighborhoods in Lewiston. How long, how large of a grant was that and how many units was, were constructed or being constructed now?
I would defer to the city of Lewiston.
I'm going to roll. Any other questions before we move on?
Yeah, I've got one. So when I look at the, the map that you've created for this, there's, there are some numbers on the lots that are just too hard to, you can't zoom in and read the numbers. What, what's the dimensions are you seeing on those, those lots? I know, well, you asked, you asked acreage. I figured the dimensions are already there.
Some of the better aspect maybe if we use the original one.
I guess if you use the original one, I think you'll find it be more accurate.
I can't do that one. This way. So clearly some of the lots off from South Main Street in Vickery have been sold off, but we are looking at...
.4 acres, .35, .4.
So that's pretty much every neighborhood in Auburn.
I, I got a question. So can you elaborate a little bit on how the program works from a big picture? So there's limited to the cost of the building is 242? And what, like how, who subsidizes the other 125,000 dollars per unit? Because we can only sell it for 242, but it's going to cost 400. So who's paying for that?
So that is a big part of, so the intention was that a lot of the price will come down, hopefully overall, because of the infrastructure is going to be in place. So therefore the developer is not spending that. They haven't got to recoup that part of the price. So that'll bring it down some. Main Housing is working with us on a program that they've already got in place and it needs more funding and we would hope that that would, would come through and we've talked to them about that already, as well as there would be, some of the money would come back through the TIF program where we would actually create subsidy within that, like we have with the ARPO dollars that we have for the ADU program and the multi-unit that we already put in place. So very similar subsidy type layering as you see in a lot of other places. And the developer also, I'm sure, will be going after some tax benefits as well to help offset some of those prices.
And then, so 70% are the 242. What about the other 30%? Are they also going to have?
So our intention here is have a mixed value here. So therefore it's like all the houses are going to be very similar, but there's going to be some people that are going to come in and pay the market rate and some people are going to be all some subsidy, all depending on what makes the most sense for everybody coming to the table.
So are they going to build all the same? Are they going to be, is it, I grew up in track housing in suburbia where every third house looks the same except the, the door's on the other side, right? Is that what this is going to look like or is it going to, or because?
We're nowhere near that yet. I couldn't tell you right now. I mean, again...
So if the market rate housing, they're going to buy the same house that the subsidized, so is that what we're saying or is it going to be the lot and you can build whatever you want?
The developer will be controlled that side of it. Means they're going to be developing the, the actual development. So therefore, the intention would be is the houses would be very, very similar and they'd be of the same standard and quality and simply the subsidy would be going to the people who need it.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Just a quick one. I'm assuming that this matches up nicely with the Main Housing homeownership program?
It happens to go to it really well.
So side note, I, I gotta say, I'm pretty happy with how everything's come together because Glenn and I have spent an ordinate amount of hours at Main State Housing talking about that program. Two years ago, we, we asked them to dust it off the shelves or take off the shelf and dust it off. And then all of a sudden, everybody loved it and they used it. And we went up to look about funding and everything and it was all gone. So hopefully they can, the legislature will refund this. I'm working with the legislature right now and the governor's office in order to make sure that appropriations can't happen in the next cycle. So all the little things that have been worked on, put together to make this is quite, it's quite interesting.
And again, it's a national competitive grant process, but I think we're in a much better position than we would have been if we hadn't done all that work ahead of time. And I want to thank my staff, you know, for a tremendous amount of work on this, as well as all the partners that are here tonight. I mean, they've all stepped up and given time and effort and, you know, just hoping we can make something happen.
Now, thank you all very much. On behalf of the city of Auburn, your work now, you know, proper planning prevents poor performance. Your proper planning is actually going to help this go through and it's needed. I think we need 2,000 more units if that was your calculations, Zach, plus or minus? And that marries up proportionally how much we need if we're to believe, and hopefully we do, the governor's goal for new housing by 2030. So we will definitely and have been doing our part. If there's no further questions, we'll move on. Councilor Staples?
Just to wrap this up, so what's the, what's the schedule moving forward that you foresee for this?
So next up will be, based on what we hear for feedback tonight, we'll be coming to you next Monday night at city council with an order asking you to authorize the city manager to apply for this grant and to set this piece of property aside for this program until we run the course to see if we get the grant.
Great. Thank you all very much, everybody that partake in this. We're going to move on now in our workshop schedule. We have one more public item and then we're going to go into an economic development executive session. So next up is Eric Cousins. We're going to get an update on Lake Auburn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Most of this you have seen at various meetings over the course of the last really couple years now. Some of the items have been through a planning board recommendation and we're ready to come back to council. Some of the items have not been fully through the planning board process and were started by council in January for planning board consideration. And the advice of our legal counsel was even though a lot of these have been through significant public process over the last couple of years, was to bring them all back through a consolidated public process so they can all be considered together. Some of them sort of depend on another part of it passing and interact with each other in that way. So last year, the planning board made recommendations on text amendments related to Lake Auburn watershed. We reviewed those with this presentation last week with the planning board and there's really four major components. One of them is the text changes throughout the Lake Auburn watershed overlay to address the septic system standards, as well as some agricultural standards, sludge spreading, but a large group of text amendments. Another one is a zoning map amendment that changes the existing one acre minimum lot size areas in the watershed that allow for residential uses to three acres. The third one is the watershed boundary on the southern end of the lake in the Graceland gravel pits, open gravel mine. And then the fourth one being the portions that the consultants, as well as Main Drinking Water Program and the ad hoc committee for, that was put together by the Auburn Water District made up of staff and elected officials from both cities are comfortable with. Once that area is moved out of the watershed to recognize that the actual drainage pattern does not put water into the watershed, the last piece would be what zone do we put in place to allow for some flexibility? And I think one piece of that, that's been sort of lost in the discussion is this is really, we know it doesn't drain towards the lake, but at the same time, the open gravel pit and blasting into bedrock is not a use that we prefer to see near the lake either. So this is an opportunity to repurpose that land with modern stormwater controls.
Eric, before you go on, could you, and I think I know the answer, but the federal government provides a license for mining, correct?
State, state government.
State does.
Yep.
What is there, they could literally go to the water table if I remember what you said last year, right?
So the, yeah, between 50 and 70%, I think it's right around 60% of that pit was created before we had the mining standards in the state. So it's considered grandfathered and it's not subject to all of the same standards, including a reclamation requirement when they're done with it. But yes, they could actually dig, they don't have to stop at the water table. They can dig into the water table in that, that area. Yep. And I think more, the most concerning piece is we've talked a lot about the bedrock being a component of what controls the water that's moving away from the lake in the ground, but they're allowed to blast bedrock under those grandfathered areas as well to create aggregate material to use on construction projects. I've covered essentially these four in the previous one, but the revised watershed boundary that Main Drinking Water Program is comfortable with as a conservative line based on the existing data now totals just shy of 60 acres that would come out of the mapped watershed. There is an opportunity to continue groundwater monitoring and I think we'll see that happen to provide the data that our consultant, CDM Smith, the Water District Consultant and CEI, the LOPAC consultant, as well as Main Drinking Water Program, aren't saying that the line is not closer to Lake Auburn. They're saying that right now, the data that we have supports a conservative line that they've accepted, but more data could better inform the actual groundwater monitoring over time to potentially adjust that. And I say adjust the watershed boundary, it's really, it's recognizing the actual drainage pattern in our maps that are used for zoning purposes. One of the biggest components of the text changes is the subsurface wastewater system standards. The current standard requires for a lot to be buildable, you have to have 36 inches of existing soil on site to what's called the limiting factor in the state plumbing code. And that limiting factor could be seasonal groundwater table. It could be a lens of clay that's impermeable to drainage. It could be ledge. But in order for a lot to be buildable under the current standard, it has to have 36 inches of soils before you hit that limiting factor. It then requires the removal of the top 12 inches of organic material from the ground before you place the system. That organic layer is really what we learned through working with David Roke and FB Environmental. That organic layer on top of the well-drained soils below it, the mineral soils, is really where you're going to get the most biological activity and the most renovation or treatment of wastewater. What we've effectively been doing is setting the system below that into sand and gravel that drains very quickly and only requiring a 24-inch actual separation from groundwater or the limiting factor, whatever it is at that site. So the new standard would allow for materials that are designed for this purpose. There's a specification that we created working with the retired state soil scientist and site evaluator David Roke, known as a real expert in the state, would allow for you to bring materials in to build up that separation, but it would require the construction of a true 36 inches of separation from the bottom of the system to that limiting factor. In addition, it would require a curtain drain or upslope drainage swale to make sure that groundwater isn't moving through the septic system. And we have around 275 existing systems in the Lake Auburn watershed and only about 50 that meet this newer standard. Only about 50 that meet the standard that we've had in place for the last 30 years or so. One of the biggest benefits to this that we as staff have identified is those 275 approximately standard systems can be rebuilt to the state plumbing code at only nine to 12 inches of separation from groundwater. So this standard going forward would require a new first-time system. About 50 of those have been built since we've had the current standard in place, or a replacement system to meet this higher separation with proper soils that slow the drainage and allow for the bacterial mats and the full function of a septic system to actually clean that wastewater before it goes into the groundwater table. Can't emphasize that enough that I think the replacement systems are probably the ones that benefit the most from this over time, that they have that better separation.
Eric, just as you go along, could you, I mean, we've seen this about a year ago and this is a recap for the most part. Could you just take a second and highlight anything that's changed in what you're presenting tonight versus what we initially saw and first took up a year plus ago?
Nothing on that particular element, the septic system standards, but it is an important component of it. The other things that have changed is a larger agricultural buffer strip from 50 to 100 feet for tilled fields. Manure and sludge disposal is allowed currently in the watershed. We thought it was prudent to eliminate the allowance for municipal sludge disposal. It's not happening in the watershed now, but it was allowed prior to the PFAS concerns that we've had more recently. There is a larger setback that will exist in the new ordinance for new septic systems to be 400 feet is what's recommended from the lake. There's a lot of LOPAC-owned land within that distance and the difference between 300 or 400 feet that's been discussed over the last year provides a little bit more separation, but it doesn't significantly change the number of lots that are developable. And that would be from the lake or tributaries to the lake in the watershed. That's one of the larger differences and then not entirely shelled out in part of the current changes, but we are looking to include a requirement in the new septic system ordinance that would require, either require LOPAC to do inspections, which was a topic of debate at the planning board last week, or after reviewing that discussion, we as staff have talked about possibly editing that instead of saying that LOPAC shall inspect systems every five years or upon sale, to say that a system owner shall allow LOPAC to inspect the system every five years or upon sale, so that we're regulating the land use and not mandating LOPAC to do something. But they're on board with being able to provide that inspection oversight. The five-year inspection, I think over time will give us a good baseline on the condition and age of all systems and catch any failures. We had suggested that there be a requirement upon sale because that is often the time where there's resources available to address a failure. If a new homeowner, if a system was inspected four years ago and I bought my house now and then the city or LOPAC comes in and does an inspection one year after my ownership, that could put a homeowner in a really tough spot a year after buying a house to have to replace the system. So the sale piece, we thought, made some sense. Those are the big ones for the text amendments. So any, any questions? I know you've seen most of that, the sludge piece, a larger buffer strip for septic systems and for agricultural uses. The prohibition of new animal farms was something we had talked about. We've better defined animal farms and hobby farms. So there's still allowance, an allowance for a property owner to raise a small number of animals for their own consumption. We don't think we could prohibit that, but we wanted to really define that well so we can differentiate that from a commercial animal farm.
Is this the end of your presentation or did you want to just take a break for Q and A?
This is the end of the text piece and then we'll go on to the map changes.
Okay. So is there any other, is there any questions? And this is, listen, this has been a contentious and misinformed item for a year and a half. The majority, and correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, the majority of what we're seeing tonight as well was initially proposed a year plus ago. I mean, obviously moving the, the sludge component, I'm glad you caught that, it's great, 300 to 400 feet and so forth. So, you know, but this is a time where we have to figure out how you want to proceed and if there's anything you want to go and see the planning board look at again, because they've only had a workshop on this. It doesn't come to vote until November on their end.
November is this public hearing, November 14th.
You know, this is our time. I mean, if, if anybody here thinks that the septic system, because it's right there in front of us, is wrong and that we need to go back to our old model, let's, let's talk... and that we need to go back to our old model, let's, let's talk now about that. Our current model that is, what, obviously polluting the groundwater right now. So let's talk about that.
Yeah, so not, not, not necessarily much on that topic. But with the other changes that are new since the last time we talked about this, could you just talk a little bit about how those ended up as proposals?
So they were recommended by the ad hoc committee that was made up of a city councillor from Lewiston, a city councillor from Auburn, two staff from Lewiston, two staff from Auburn, and a representative from Turner that's a member of Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission. Those were pieces that we discussed with them that became recommendations. And I had the same, I think, concern that you're asking about on, they need to be initiated by a planning board, a council or petition. So what we did was we brought those recommendations to the planning board and asked for the planning board to schedule this draft, including those changes for a public hearing in November, and they agreed to do that last week.
Yeah, so these were all accepted, all these changes were accepted and approved by appointed members from Lewiston, Auburn and outline.
And we have a copy of that, that summary with signatures in the, in the packet.
Yeah, so I was, I was, as the member of the Auburn Water District, I was a member of that ad hoc committee. And I'll say that it was enlightening because I think there was a lot of misunderstanding of what the proposals were. And Eric, I think you, that you could see light bulbs going off with everybody that said, what we've proposed and what we proposed in the past makes a lot of sense. And that whole ad hoc committee was great in that it brought a lot of those stakeholders that didn't realize how good this septic system is, for example. And they didn't really understand what the issue with the gravel pit was. And, and when we're sat down and we all talked and it was really good. And so it really went from kind of their side and our side to everybody really agreed on moving forward. And that what we'd found was, that what we'd been doing was accurate as well. Rick LaChappelle. City councillor LaChappelle, the woman who used to work here.
Tracy Roy.
Tracy Roy. And then the gentleman from Turner, I'm drawing a blank on his name, who's on the LaPAC.
Yep, it's Alan.
Alan Holbrook, you're correct.
And Kevin Gagne from the Water District. And I honestly, the, this package, including the stuff we'll talk about in a minute for the one acre to three acre lot size, I would challenge anybody to find a set of standards that protects a watershed as strong as this set of standards will.
Yeah, and the low-income development stuff, I mean, the low-impact development stuff that.
Yeah, so and actually that brings up one more piece that I didn't mention that it doesn't change anything today because LD two thousand and three isn't in place. But the group also recommended in the draft includes, LD two thousand and three has an allowance to exempt the Lake Auburn watershed from the additional dwelling units that LD two thousand and three would allow for, and this ordinance includes that. So we do allow one and two families in all of our residential zones. But you would not be able to do LD two thousand and three-driven affordable developments or four-unit buildings or four-single-family buildings. It would be one and two family homes, as is allowed today.
Eric, is the above-ground twenty-four inches or higher that level?
So the, the currently, you have to maintain, above-ground is going to depend on the depth of your limiting factor. So if you have thirty-six inches of existing soil between the ground surface and your limiting factor, then you're not going to have to build up as much. If you have twelve inches, you're going to have to build up twenty-four. If you have twenty-four, you have to build up twelve. So it's really going to depend on the existing site conditions to provide that. But the top surface under the system is going to be a soil that slows the drainage and provides good wastewater treatment.
So I just want to reiterate what you just said, as in, there isn't a better standard out there than this. And when we're really talking about, you know, all the signs in our community that say protect Lake Auburn, this is one of, like, the nail in the coffin that's going to put us in the right direction, going to do it, it's going to help us.
I mean, we've had the most qualified consultants and the Main Drinking Water Program at the table for this. I don't believe there's any set of standards, all of these as a whole, within the state that is as restrictive as this. We are prohibiting new single-family homes in seventy-three percent of the watershed in Auburn, that is the ag zone. The other twenty-seven percent, we're requiring a minimum lot size of three acres for any new lots. We have a phosphorus standard that kicks in at two hundred square feet. So your average garden shed triggers a standard buffer creation. We have some simple LID models for those smaller projects. We have a septic standard proposed that requires thirty-six inches of separation where the state only requires twelve. Yeah, I just, there, I don't think there's another watershed with this level of protection in the state.
Thank you. Great.
So Eric, why don't you continue on with your proposal, our presentation, I'm sorry.
So the septic standard does make some lots buildable that are not currently buildable because you're allowed to bring those soils in. We looked at a number of options with planning board, and you've already seen this. The planning board made a recommendation nearly a year ago, I think, on this one. But again, we're trying to bring them all back through as a group, another round of public hearings so they can be looked at holistically. But if you look at that, the current zoning, probably the one sort of right sent, on the right, in one from the left on, right without the watershed, you can see all of the brown strip zones versus the darker green strip zones. The brown area is rural residential, one acre, minimum lot size. The darker green is three acres. What we propose to achieve that lower density is to make all of those the low-density country residential three-acre district. It's an existing zone, allows for one and two family homes, and that's it for residential uses. So that's, that's what we've proposed. FB Environmental, CDM, and the city staff with an intern have all done reviews of what we believe will be the development potential before and after. All of those reviews agree that there will be a reduced number of potential development lots in the watershed, even with the septic standard. Not all of the assessments came out with the exact same number, but they all came out with less after the group of changes, as long as you do the one acre to three acre change. Happy to answer any questions on this piece of it, and then the rest of it is the graceland parcel.
Yeah, I've got a question on the Upper Watershed towns. Did we do any analysis on future buildable lots with this applied to the other municipalities?
So we don't have those numbers, but that's something that could be added to the FB model if we wanted to in the future. We really wanted to establish something that is based on modern science best practices. And then we could look at whether or not other towns want to improve or if there's a need to, to push those other towns to restrict development some. More than fifty percent of the phosphorus, based on a study this summer, is coming in from Townsend Brook and the basin is what the district has been finding with their.
Upper Watershed towns?
Yep.
So more than half of the phosphorus, which is a leading indicator or, you know, facilitator of algae blooms and other bad things in the lake, are coming from areas outside of Auburn?
And it's hard to differentiate, I think they're doing a lot of testing now and we'll better understand that. But those streams also flow through Auburn, but those streams are carrying phosphorus. And there's resident phosphorus that's already in the lake, and then there's inputs. And I think it was right around fifty-five percent of the inputs are coming from those two streams.
Questions, folks?
And then lastly, the graceland parcels, off of Graceland Road in the existing pits near the landfill in Auburn, there has been a lot of discussion on this one. We had followed FB's, Environmental's advice and moved the watershed boundary and then rescinded that last year. Since then, Main Drinking Water Program has been engaged with all of the existing data that we have and the models created by CDM Smith as well as FB Environmental. This yellow line at the center, I'm going to go forward to see if there's one zoomed in more, if there isn't. It's kind of small on the screen, but this yellow line at the center is the, you can't see my cursor up there, can you? The yellow line kind of crossing the middle of the pit. That is the conservative line that, that's supported by, FB Environmental believes the line was closer. CDM Smith did their own assessment and found that they had some, they questioned some of the data and drew another line, the blue line that's there. But all three, FB Environmental, CDM Smith and Main Drinking Water, agree that south of that yellow line is a safe and conservative boundary with the data that already exists. I think if you had hydrogeologists, geologists look at the data, every one of them may have a slightly different analysis, but this is the area where all three of those experts agree that as a conservative and safe boundary, the data supports that. None of the water south of that line is going to the lake.
Eric, help us understand the definition of a watershed boundary. Is it a scientific line or is it a political line?
So a watershed boundary, US Geological Survey uses only surface topography to draw their watershed boundaries. Our ordinance calls out that the boundary of Lake Auburn is determined by both surface topography and groundwater. Most of the, most areas we, in, in the world, we just don't have groundwater information to take that into consideration. So I think that's probably why USGS ignores that and they focus on the surface topography and water runs downhill. So they take the high points and draw the boundaries around the resource. We have an incredible amount of groundwater data for this particular area, partly because of the mining, but also because of the landfill monitoring just to the east of this area. And we're incredibly fortunate that the big mistake of citing a landfill right next to our water supply years ago, that the groundwater is moving away and not impacting the lake. But Auburn's ordinance definition takes into account groundwater. US Geological Survey just looks at surface topography, but it's the physical boundary where water either drains towards the resource, towards the lake, is in the watershed. If it drains away from the lake, it's not in the watershed.
I think that, that's, and thank you, that was actually great. I forgot the fact that most everybody else doesn't have that subsurface data points that we do. But let me rephrase the question. Watershed boundaries are based upon scientific data, either surface or subsurface runoff into a body of water?
Yep, it's a natural boundary, a science-based boundary.
Versus an arbitrary line that is created by elected officials at a municipal or state level or federal level?
Yeah, and I think that the reason that you and the planning board are part of the process is because we use that line to dictate where certain standards apply. So it's, it's also a zoning boundary of sorts.
Right, but.
But the watershed itself is a physical, science-based drainage area.
So we can't, for example, vote tonight to have the Lake Auburn watershed run down Center Street? And so be it, it's there because it's not based on science.
Yep, and it can also be altered. You know, there may have been a mountain in the middle of that pit where portions of it, at one time, if you saturated the surface, drained the other way. But now it's a hole and the drainage is dictated by where it goes once it soaks into the floor of the pit because none of it is getting out of the pit on the surface.
Any questions, folks? I mean, again, this is a lot of misinformation about this. Just because you can see the lake doesn't necessarily mean it's in the watershed. And no matter how much we try, we can't change the flow of gravity as politicians.
Yeah, I got one. So the, the city council packet has a couple of letters from the city of Lewiston discussing the lawsuit that we currently have. So I suppose that's fair game to talk about in this, in this workshop. So could you talk about exactly where the lawsuit is, what the status is and what it's going to take for that lawsuit to be dismissed?
I, you know, we're not a party to it. We've participated in good faith to try to help, but I couldn't give you a status currently.
I mean, the parties are still, still in discussions, so no update for you at this point.
The part that is a little confusing here, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but reading through the letters, they say that they would, they would take, they would allow for the watershed boundary to be changed here and they would take that out of the lawsuit. So that means that there's still parts of the lawsuit that are in effect or, or still to be litigated. What are those pieces?
Yeah, I probably wouldn't read into a lot into that document other than to say that the, like I said before, both parties, both parties are the Auburn Water District and the city of Lewiston. They are, they are having their own discussions and working through, through that. I wouldn't read any more into it other than the fact that I think it was just highlighting that the, the boundary line should be set by this, by this unit.
I'd simply add, I'm the, in the water district, I serve on the Auburn Water District. Both parties, I know, are talking to each other and making progress, it appears to be. I can't say anything more because it's lawsuits, but the parties are talking. The ad hoc committee has been a huge benefit in that it's brought a lot of the information to people that maybe didn't realize or weren't sure of what was going on. What the work that Eric's done and staff has been phenomenal in, in allowing not just the parties, but also the drinking water program to understand what's going on and what, what's happening in the gravel pit. And in general, of the other issues around. So I can't, I'm going to be, that's as specific as I feel comfortable.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm overwhelmed and concerned about what you said, that the gravel pit is grandfathered in and that he could potentially, if he wanted to, dig down below the water table. Is there any way we can rock him off the grandfather?
No, I think there, there are sections of the pit that are already below the groundwater table. You can see standing water in the pit, and that's groundwater exposed because they've dug below that surface. I know the mayor was kind of joking about that, but really that is, you know, that, that really is the best way to make him do something different and to stop blasting is to allow for some other use of that land. And housing could be, could be a big part of that. It also allows for, the stopping of blasting is probably the biggest piece that's unpredictable. But it also allows for grading to happen to make sure you set a permanent grade that drains away from the watershed.
Counselor Gary, think about the planning board review. When they mandate retention ponds, trees, ground cover, all of that as part of, you know, the development plan. And I wasn't joking, that's one of the reasons we started this a year and a half, almost two years ago, is because the worst thing to have next to a lake or in our downtown is an open gravel mine without any, you know, that's grandfathered for most federal regulations. Houses on city septic with proper foliage and swales, everything else in the low-impact design standards is the best thing that we could have as an alternative to what we have now.
Is there a way to find out where that, if it is been breached, is that still flowing away or is there any chance there's some pollutants that got into that and that could go toward? Or is there any chance there's some pollutants that got into that and that could go towards the lake?
No, I, I think all the consultants are comfortable, this line you see on the right, that everything south of that line, uh, where we're proposing this, is definitely draining away from the lake. Um, there is also still a question about additional area and the drinking water program, as well as the consultants are saying, if we can get more, um, data points on the, the elevation of groundwater and the direction that it's moving, then they could reevaluate exactly where to draw that line at a future date. And I think we'll see that that data will be collected, um, over the coming months or years. Um, but, uh, right now, this is the line where all three, the two consultants and the drinking water program, are comfortable that it's safely draining away from the lake.
Has there been anything being consideredation about unintended consequences from adding more homes to the environment, like the pollutants from whatever they heat their place with? Or the running of cars or, or things? Because that is also an extent, unintended consequence.
I think we would end up, if the site is developed, we'll end up with modern stormwater controls. So drainage systems that put the stormwater into, um, some type of, of stormwater treatment system, whether, whether it's a low-impact development, um, treatment system or a filter bed that functions much like a septic system, but all of the water will drain into the ground through an engineered system. Um, I mean, right now you have a crusher out there, you have diesel trucks, um, you have loaders and excavators and there's a lot of heavy equipment operating out there that, um, it, there's, the risk for something like a fuel spill exists with the current use, probably more so than, than regular motor vehicles on paved surfaces.
But what about the stuff that goes up into the atmosphere? Because if it's, if we have clouds, it'll keep it low and it could also float towards the lake.
Yeah, I, I can't really speak to that exactly, other than, you know, Graceland Road in the mall area already has thirty thousand plus cars a day that are right in that, in that vicinity.
Let's have, is there any other questions? We'll come back to you, Counselor, but- Is there any other questions for Eric? Counselor Moore?
I understand Counselor Gary's concerns, but that's not really the topic at hand right now. It's what's the accurate boundary for the watershed? Um, the discussion on site development and what should and shouldn't be allowed, that's something to come after. Right now, we're discussing what the actual, physical, science-based boundary of the watershed is.
Any other questions, or, yeah, do you have another question, or you can, can, anything? Nothing. Well, from an agenda standpoint, the timing, I believe, planning board in early November, then it comes back to us afterwards?
Yeah, planning board on the fourteenth, I think yours is the twenty-first, and then December fourth, or it's right around there, so. Um, so that would be planning board on the fourteenth. If we get through that, we have a few steps, uh, things that the planning board asked for that we're working towards having ready for that meeting. Um, Auburn Water District will take a look at the current draft and I think provide a recommendation before that meeting. And then, um, first reading on the twenty-first of November with the city council, that will not be a public hearing. Um, and then the December fourth would be the public hearing.
Got it, okay. We'll make sure that's published and everything too going forward under schedule, so. Outstanding work, it's been a long haul. I'll say it on behalf of the entire city council, entire city. You know, this is, uh, looking forward to having this behind us and actually implementing some of these positive changes in the upper watershed town, too, to protect Lake Auburn for generations. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, this time, we do, whoop, excuse me, we do have an executive session, um, to talk about economic development matters pursuant to 1 MRS A four oh five six C, which premature disclosure would prejudice the competitive, competitive or bargaining position of the city. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Second, Counselor Staples, all those in favor? Okay, we now see an executive session. Thank you very much. We'll reconvene in the council chambers at seven.
Pretty good, too. Good evening, folks. Okay, we're gonna get started. Okay, thank you. I'd like to call the order, the official City of Auburn meeting for October 16th, 2023. If you could all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, for nation, for God, for this world, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, we have the minutes for the September 18th, 2023 meeting. Are there any corrections? If not, I'll adjourn the motion to approve the minutes of the September 18th meeting at this time.
Motion to approve. Second.
Huh, second from Staples. All those in favor? Opposed? None being passes unanimously. Next, we have an update on recycling with the city manager, who is... En route, en route. Uh, yes, I will skip around and wait for him to come back. Next, we have a proclamation. And you know, it's one of my favorite times of year. It's our Extra Mile Award. And Extra Mile Day is something we do every year, and it's something that we do in order to recognize people in the community who go above and beyond, or go that extra mile for their community as a whole. And this year, it's my distinct honor to ask our friend, Auburn's friend, Mr. David Griswold. I know you're here, and you can't hide. He's gonna love this. Mr. Griswold, can you just step up to the DS, please? So before I read this proclamation... No, no, right up here. No, you're right. Oh, yeah, just come right up. You're center.
Front?
Absolutely, absolutely. This is the embarrassment factor is like 20% of this whole thing. But you're, you always speak, so you're pretty used to it. The first time I ever met David was when I was first elected, and I saw this gentleman walking down the street. Hello? Okay. Walking down the street, pointing and counting trees with a tablet. I don't think you remember, I'm not sure if you remember that or not. And I'm just like, what are you doing? And he looked at me, he goes, "I'm counting trees." That was it. I just kept on going after that. I said, "I'd figure it out later on," and we did. We did that full tree inventory with a grant. I know Mr. Griswold handled that. So let me tell you all a little bit more about Mr. Griswold and why he's getting this award. He's a longtime community volunteer, serving as a member of the, member or chair of the city's Community Forest Subcommittee, the Natural Product and Agriculture Working Group, the Conservation Working Group, and the Lewis and Auburn Community Forest Board. Dave has a deep passion for conservation and environmentalism, and he's committed to helping the city in its president's battle invasive plants and insect species, especially the brown-tailed moth. Planting trees, maintaining our community forest, and so much more. Dave always goes the extra mile, spreading his message with courtesy and quiet strength, always willing to share his extensive knowledge, and our community is better, healthier, and more sustainable, thanks to the efforts of Dave Griswold. So ladies and gentlemen, it gives me great pleasure to celebrate and recognize the recipient of the 2023 Extra Mile Award to David Griswold. That's for you. That's unique. There will never be another one like that, okay? So thank you, David. Can we get a picture? If we can get the council together? And I was just telling David, most of these awards are a combination of glass and brass and marble, but his is just wood. So... Wall nut, too. It's beautiful. Tighter. Again, David, thank you. That is beautiful wall nut. Next, we're gonna go back to a recycling update with our city manager, Phil Crowell. Phil, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Just to give an update on where we are at the last, one of the last meetings was the council had authorized to negotiate with Casella on the recycling program. Just to give people an over... Overview of where we've been. In September, the mayor called a meeting with Casella city staff to look at what could be done with recycling, improve the existing program that we have. Counselor Staples, I was invited to be part of that, and through a result of those conversations led to really identifying what are the key materials that Casella is currently recycling that they have a market for? What is our current recycling usage rate within the city? The best that we could try to identify. What is our contamination rate? We started taking a look at many different variables that we had. We talked about what we felt would be more beneficial for the city with a recycling program. The council did authorize to be able to allocate the funds that were currently in the FY24 budget to be used to reinstate our recycling with additional programming. I think it's important to note that in the last, somewhere around 12 years, recycling has been on the table, off the table, canceled, restarted, and discussed at length. Probably had two, at least two, maybe three recycling committees that have been meeting, looking at recycling, making recommendations. You know, recycling is not an easy market for communities to manage. Curbside collection is expensive. We have been working through that with our current provider, who is Casella. But if you go back and take a look at each of the recycling committee's recommendations, there were several items that never made it beyond the document that was presented. It never made it to implementation, and those were regarding marketing, communication with the public, education about materials. Those are all things that each recycling committee had stressed were important and items that we should be looking at, but really never made it to where it needed to be. And so when, when the mayor called the meeting with Casella, we were able to actually get to those items. And so what's being proposed now in reinstating the recycling program will be the items that I just mentioned. Accepting only the materials that there's a market for, and, and those materials, currently there is no real market for glass. Occasionally, glass is used with a buyer who might be able to put that in asphalt and be able to utilize that. But most of the glass is being brought to a landfill currently. When it came to metals, metals were being processed exactly the same way as main waste energy processes their metals, basically brought to a local vendor that then takes that and buys and pays for, for the metals. So in discussions with Casella, it made, it made sense for us not to include metals in the recyclable materials. So are we asking residents to just put that in your solid waste? That solid waste process goes through the incinerary, goes through a machine that main waste energy has that shakes that out of the ash and has, you know, a way to be able to draw that up and, and then be able to process that. We pay per ton for our materials that we dispose of. It is a much, much higher rate for recycling, those materials, that are just gonna go through the same process that our solid waste goes through. So Casella's proposal to us was to not include that, not include glass, but to include materials which will be, number one, number two, number five plastics, cardboard, and mixed paper. So to educate and inform the public about this, Casella will be launching a Recycle Better app, which will provide direct communication, education to the participant. Whoever's participating in this program will have that app. You'll be able to scan your document, I mean, sorry, you'll be able to scan your material and know whether or not, is this something that we'll be collecting or not? And, and if it's not, it's also going to provide recommendations of where in the area you might be able to take that item and actually dispose of it in that process to be able to do that. So the launching of that app, as well as the wastewater wizard tool, that's all part of that same app, which will certainly help in the process of ensuring that what we send to Casella through our recyclable materials is what we have a market for and that we can process well. And then also, initially, in the conversations that we've had, it was about limiting this to three wards to be able to get this to where we needed, with the council authorizing to utilize the, the budget that was allocated for recycling curbside. We were able to expand that, so that'll be any of the existing solid waste customers within the city will still, will now be able to use curbside recycling collection effective. We're shooting for November 1st, so we don't believe that there'll be anything that will stop that. We'll be pushing out a lot of information, but it looks like we'll reinstate recycling on November 1st. The other difference with the program is it was confusing because you had to do quick math to know whether or not your collection date had a fifth Thursday or a fifth Tuesday to know if your recyclable is gonna be collected on that day. Now it'll be every other week regardless of how the calendar lays out. So the app is interactive, so you'll be able to ask questions. You'll also be able to get time-sensitive alerts. So if there's inclement weather for your collection on tomorrow, and the alert will go out and state that tomorrow is heavy rain or heavy snow, if possible, it would be best for you to hold your recyclables to your following pickup. So that way, we don't have, we don't have contaminated materials. And so, but if it's something that you can put out and you can put a cover on it and keep it dry, you'll still be able to have collection. It won't be, it won't be canceling it. It'll just say that it's best to try to keep that material dry if possible. So what we'll also do is we will continue with the containers that are currently located at Public Works. So those units that we have at Public Works will still be there. And so, and we're gonna do that for a while. We're gonna monitor that. Most likely, it will not be four containers. Casella owns these units. We worked with Casella to get these units there to make them available. I'm sure if, once numbers are coming in and, and it appears that maybe we only need one or two units there, then those will slowly be reduced over time, once we, we monitor that. I think that's, that's all the information. The, let's talk about budgetary impacts and their proposal. The... To make sure that this was available to every solid waste user in the city. And I use that term because not every, not everyone in the city is eligible for solid waste collection. And so if you're currently a solid waste customer within the city, then recycle, curbside collection will be available to you. There are some condo associations. There are some multi-unit apartment buildings that are not included in, in our solid waste contract. So, so that's why I'm being very careful to mention, if you're currently a solid waste customer, then recycling will be available to you. So the, the cost, and this is just the cost for curbside collection, will be $19,189 a month, which puts us, at the end of the year, will put us at $153,512 for recycling, and we had budgeted $189,000 for the curbside. You know, we're certainly paying more per month over this eight-month period. However, we are getting the additional collections and the education and marketing materials. And but I believe where we'll also start seeing a cost shift is if the weight, the tonnage changes with not putting glass, not putting metals in our recyclables, and now we're paying the solid waste disposal fee. We'll, we'll see it, we'll see an offset in our cost. Counselors, certainly answer any, any questions you might have.
Well, we can, when we, we have this later on the agenda, so we'll open up that.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yep, thanks.
Counsel, we'll just ask questions, everything. When this is agenda item, a little bit later on tonight. Okay, moving on, council communications. Start off to my right. Do we have any communications? At or about? Counselor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was asked by a few constituents about the election dealing with our public safety building. Supposedly, I haven't seen the specimen ballot, and it said, I've been told that it says 30 years. Is that true?
It's on the, we'll have that discussion during the... Well, yeah, that, are you talking about public utilities, or are you talking about public safety? I'm sorry.
The public safety building.
That is an agenda item. We'll discuss it then.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Any other communications? No, you can go, go, yeah, absolutely. Do that one now, please.
Okay. Just wanted to remind everyone, this Saturday, October 21st, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Central Station, the Auburn Fire Department is having an open house. I know that I brought my kids last year. They had a great time, some prizes, some gifts and everything for them there. So they'll be able to look through the, all the fire equipment, all the fire trucks and everything there. It's a great experience. So if you have some time, Saturday, October 21st, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Central Station, which is 5:50 on Minot Ave. And I hope to see everybody there.
Yes, October 29th. Put that in your schedule. Come to the Anniversary Park. 1 o'clock, we're gonna have trick-or-treat, all free candy for all the kids, and we do not pay for dental.
No. Counselor Staples?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to thank city staff for performing walk audits in our downtown and other areas a couple of weeks ago. Jonathan Labonte led that with quite a, quite a bit of neighborhood participation. It was, it was well-attended, and I believe that we're gonna see a report from that pretty soon. So I'm looking forward to that. I also wanted to thank staff for putting on the shops at Anniversary Park. It's been, it's been a lot of fun to go down there and see the different vendors and the different things that are going on there on Thursday nights. Been working quite a bit with the Sustainability Working Group and the SNRB to, to discuss recycling. Went to meetings with them last week. Wanted to thank Phil for, for his work on that one. And also, the Anderson Scottland Trust had a river cleanup over the weekend, and I got a chance to go down there and pick up a bunch of trash, and it was, it was a great community event.
That's okay. One communication piece. I was just, this morning, it came out. The Organization for Bipartisan Policy out of Washington, DC, actually just recognized Auburn Maine and did a complete, or a nationwide case study called Small City Zoning Reforms in Auburn, Maine. It was worth a read. I was very impressed. It was kind of a shock when I saw it. But it's just another testament of the good work that the council and staff and city, and this comes on the heels of the Congress of New Urbanism Award that we received for some of our innovation out in Boston a couple of weeks ago. So congratulations, everybody, especially staff, too, for making it all put together nicely. So, Mr. Manager?
Just one item. Staff is texting me while I'm here, so the truck and treat, Truck or Treat is coming to Public Works on October 26th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Good opportunity to see all the equipment there. And then our PAL Center will be running the Haunted House on October 31st. So a lot of Halloween-type activities.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to open session. We got the first open session of the night. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council about any issue directly related to city business or any item that does not appear on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to speak, just step up to the podium. Give us your name and address. If you could, leave me your comments for about three minutes. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Dunn. I live at 530 Court Street. I'm here to comment on the vote at the last city council meeting that exempted Area A2 of New Auburn from the T4.2B ordinance. Counselors Gary and Whiting, thank you for your consistent... Councilors Gary and Whiting, thank you for your consistent votes opposing this ordinance. You clearly hear the residents. Councilors Milks, Hawes, and Moran, you have all been in favor of T4.2B. You voted to allow the ordinance in your own neighborhoods and in others across the city, disregarding opposition, including more than 2,400 signatures on a petition. Last month, however, you voted no to T4.2B in Area A2. This seems quite inconsistent with your previous votes. Area A2 meets your criteria to be rezoned, including proximity to downtown, access to city services, and open land that could be infilled. I did not hear any clear reasons from this council or the planning board that should exempt this area, even though it was recommended to be rezoned by our own planning staff. Counselor Walker, last month you said, "No one wants three and store-furry apartment buildings in their neighborhood." I completely agree. However, you weren't concerned about my neighborhood or any other when you voted yes on 4.2B in their areas. You blindly supported this ordinance throughout the city until it came close to your home. That is called hypocrisy. Counselor Staples, last month you also voted not to allow T4.2B in the A2 area. It's baffling, since you have been such a strong advocate for this ordinance in our city. You have claimed that we really need the housing, but when it came to the neighborhood that you live in, you voted no. Many of us have been labeled NIMBYs for opposing ordinance changes in our neighborhoods, and yet with your vote, you did the same thing. What does that make you? From the beginning, I have been opposed to the scale and scope of this ordinance and the speed of its implementation. As a member of the opposition group, I have been subjected to insulting comments by many, including our mayor and his supporters. We have been called uninformed, ignorant, liars, and the ever-famous NIMBYs. With the vote cast at the last meeting, some questions arise. Why were the concerns of residents across other rezoned areas minimized or ignored? While a small group of A2 residents were clearly heard, what is the reason for this sudden inconsistency in your votes? It'll be up to the voters to consider in our next election. The thousands of people who signed petitions in the city wanted genuine compromise and a thoughtful process, contrary to how the developers and some politicians have tried to frame it. We are not afraid of growth and change. I look forward to it in November.
Oh, no, we just don't clap like that. I know, I'm just giving everyone a reminder. Anybody else in the public would like to speak?
Hi, my name's TJ Castielo, 225 Vicarry Road. Me and my wife just recently moved here two years ago from Boston, Massachusetts. You guys are doing the same thing in Auburn that has been happening in Boston for the past 50 years. My family moved from Italy to Boston. It was a pig farm where my family grew up. Now it's an overcrowded disaster area. The same thing's happening. I live on Vicarry Road. What are the benefits to building this huge complex on our street? What's the benefits for our community, our neighborhood, our children? We don't want this, nobody wants this. This is the Green New Deal at its finest. Are we going to get a break on our taxes? What are the benefits for us? It's just terrible, and I want to make it, bring it to light, because this is terrible for our community. It's not beneficial to anybody. We want to live in the country, we want to have our land, we don't want low-income housing, we don't want this in our community. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public who'd like to speak during the first public comment? None being, we're going to move along in the agenda. There'll be other opportunities tonight, of course. Next is unfinished business. At this time, I'm going to ask, excuse me, ask for a motion to suspend the rules to move three items and new business up on the agenda, because I'd like to get those individuals home because they have, they're teachers, and they have early days tomorrow. Do I have a motion? Counselor Gary? I got a second for Counselor Moran. All those in favor suspending the rules? All those opposed? None being, okay, that was 7-0. Okay, we're going to move along on this item here. First is order, one second, please. First is Order 133-10162023. This is an order allocating $10,317 from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds, to the Auburn Ski Association to purchase an Alpine timing system. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Counselor Walker, do I have a second?
Second.
Counselor Milks, I'll open this up to the public for comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment? None being, I'll bring it back to the council. Council, ARPA funds, this is helping out, and the information sheet would probably tell you, high school, Auburn Middle School, youth programs from kids with Auburn and kids from away that travel to Lost Valley specifically for ski racing and practice, including college.
Yeah, so so far, whenever we've done these ARPA allocations to different groups and associations, they've usually come with a letter or some sort of a detail explaining how they qualify for ARPA. So I just want to make sure that when we do these, that the city is able to use them for ARPA funds, because there's nothing in here saying why they qualify.
Mr. Manager, just want to address that?
Yeah, I would just state that if they didn't, we wouldn't bring them before you, but it's a great question. We'll make sure that we have at least a statement in any future ones that come in. Our grant writers here, she reviews all the requests to make sure they do comply. I think most, other than probably Special Olympics, I think has a letter with the request. The Special Olympics was because it was through meetings with staff. But we'll certainly make sure that's in future orders.
And we did have the letter from them requesting the money to the organization, so that was more of an informal email, but yes. Excuse me.
Point of information, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Could you tell, I mean, you said, you said they sent in a letter requesting funds, is that the process? And if so, can other nonprofit or groups do the same thing, and who do they contact to see if they qualify?
And I'm glad you asked that. Historically, that has been the process. We've had requests, either we initiate, i.e. a grant program early on, saying we have five $10,000 grants for area programs for youth. If you remember correctly, the YMCA received it, Auburn, Suburban, Baseball Softball, several others. We've also had an equal or greater number of individuals, i.e. Anderskogging literacy volunteers, who just sent an email requesting funds and the why behind it directly to myself, the manager, or one of the city counselors, or more than one. And I want to encourage people to do that, especially as we're in the waning days of the ability for us to give away to a needy group ARPA funds, and I think this is a good call to action, that we would love to see more and more proposals from qualifying individuals and groups on how to creatively use this money specifically to help the community or help our youth. So that has gone both ways. We haven't had a quote-unquote "set application" period in finality as others might have, though I don't even think they have.
Thank you sincerely.
Yep. With that said, I'd like to ask for a vote. All those in favor of the allocation? All those opposed? None being, passes 7-0. Next is Order 134-1016023, allocating $10,000 of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds to the Edward Little High School Outdoor Club. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Gary, Counselor Walker. I've also invited Mrs. Hinckley to come up to the stage, and Mr. Frost, if you could, please. These are the two teachers from Edward Little that reached out to me that are managing, managing, lack of a better term, supervising the outdoor club, put it together from nothing. If you could, just give us a couple-minute overview of the club. I think this is the reason I asked them to speak, this is a fascinating program, so.
Okay, I'm Danielle Hinckley, I'm a science teacher at Edward Little High School.
My name's Kevin Frost, and I work with the English Language Learners at Edward Little.
Yeah, so at the beginning of this year, we had zero funds. We had zero funds, we had zero advisors, but we had about 30 heavily invested teens in this program. So we decided to take over as advisors for the program and try to beef it up to what it really should be and what our goals are, which are to get as many kids outside as possible. And so what we're really focusing on is education outside, getting kids outside and knowing that they can have fun even when it's winter, and bringing up leadership roles for those kids too. And so every month, we're going to go do an activity in the outdoors and incorporate learning, incorporate leadership, and all those things when we're out there. So we just did a hike that was really student-led. We're going to do a lot of fun things this year, but we can't really reach a lot of our demographics unless we have some funding for transportation, fees, things like that that help us reach kind of our lower demographics and our really growing diverse population at Yale.
And one of our commitments to this club is to help with some of the things that have happened to our youth regarding anxiety and depression, specifically probably more so since the COVID situation. So getting kids into nature and outdoors seems to be a good antidote for that. I'm a registered Maine guide and an educational trip leader instructor for the state of Maine. So we've started to incorporate some of those skills with the students, teaching them how to plan their own trips and to lead their own trips, which also leads to stewardship. And not only stewardship for the environment, but stewardship for each other, because when they're on these trips, they have to care for their own safety, but they also have to care for the safety of others. So we're just trying to get them out and to work as a team and things like that, so.
Great. Are there any questions from the council? I will open this up to public comment before we vote. Is there any other questions from the council? No? Thank you all, very much appreciate it. Open this up for a public comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak about this allocation?
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious. Why isn't this part of the school budget as a line item? And number two, is this ARPA grant a one-time deal? What happens after that ends?
First of all, can I get your name and address, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry, Joe Mailey, 82 Webster Street. I missed you, Mr. Counselor, last Wednesday night. We had a meeting, your district.
So I'll answer your question very quickly on this one. This, because I'm also on the school board, I think the council, the school committee should know, this came in, this program started after the budget was already approved.
I see.
Yes, so, which happens July 1.
And what happens after the ARPA funds are no longer available?
I sure hope the school committee keeps it in the budget if it proves out.
Okay, thank you.
No other comments, ask for a vote at this time. All those in favor of the allocation, please raise your hand. Opposed, none being, passes by a vote of 7-0. Next is Order 135-1016023, allocating $10,000 from the American Rescue Plan Act to the Special Olympics of Maine to be presenting sponsor for the Special Olympics Maine Winter Games 2024 to be held at Lost Valley Ski Area and Norway Bank Arena, Norway Savings Bank Arena, excuse me, in February of 2024. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Walker, second from Counselor Hawes. I will state that now, I guess the secret is out of the bag, so to speak, and for the first time in decades, the Maine Winter Special Olympics will be coming to Auburn versus Nury, not Nury, Kingfield, Sugarloaf. So we're really, really excited, worked hard to get this program. Before I bring it back to the council, any members of the public would like to speak about this program or this allocation, please step up to the podium. Everybody likes the Special Olympics, everybody's going to volunteer in February, outstanding. Counsel, comments, questions? We're going to have several thousand participants and visitors here in Auburn for about three days midweek in February. So it's great, it's great. If I could just tell you a little bit about it, partnership between Lost Valley, Norway Savings Bank Arena for speed skating, local area hotels for discounted room blocks, we're still looking for venues for their big dinners and dances. But this is a big deal, because Auburn is 75, excuse me, an hour drive away from 75% of the state's population. So we're going to give the ability and the opportunity for many more athletes to participate in the Special Olympics, Winter Special Olympics, right here in Auburn versus going up to Sugarloaf. So with that, ask for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Perfect, 7-0, thank you. Okay, I'm going to go back to the agenda now after those three votes. That can wait, that's just allocation, separate allocation. Okay, next is Order 115-09052023, approving the renewal of an auto graveyard junkyard permit for Don's No-Preference Towing, doing business as Morris Auto Parts, 940 Washington Street North. This item is presented at the September 5th meeting and was postponed to tonight's meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Counselor Walker, second for Counselor Hawes. I'll open this up to the public at this time for comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak? If so, please step up to the podium, give us your name and address, and if you could, leave me your comments to about three minutes. None being, I'll bring it back to the council. Counsel, comments, communications? We do have our attorney, Sally Daggett, here as well as Eric Cousins from Planning and Permitting in your packet, there was some information, letters of compliance and so forth, that was included for your review.
Mayor, I just think it's probably best to go ahead and move right to our attorney and Eric Cousins, who the council had requested this be brought back, and so that's their, that next step for us.
So Sally, our legal counsel, and I have worked on a set of conditions that we think could help the applicant comply with the operational standards of the license. One of the big pieces of that is that even though they're not intentionally depositing materials within the river, there are materials that are showing up in the river over time, some of them from a long time ago and others possibly from flooding events. So we're suggesting a 50-foot setback so that over this year, we can actually confine the storage of materials to an area that's slightly smaller than what's there, but to keep the materials that are deposited at least 50 feet from the edge of the river. And it looks like Jim out back has control of this computer. Jim, I don't know if you could put it on page 134 of the council packet. We've laid those conditions out as part of the packet. Because you already considered an order at the last meeting, you would need to, if you wanted to adopt those, you would need to vote to amend the order to include those conditions that we included in the packet. He's going there now, so. Yeah, the applicant did contact me this afternoon. They are here tonight. They had asked if they were comfortable with the conditions, do they need to attend? They are here. I advised them that they're not required to attend, but if you had questions, it would be a showing of good faith that this was important enough to them to be here to answer your questions.
I would probably just add that there was also a letter included in your packet from the new owner, saying, you know, their work plan and what they're looking to do for that business, and how you can proceed with that understanding and with, you know, the regular inspections that will take place, just like any other entity that's grandfathered currently within the city.
Miss Daggett, did you have anything that you wanted to highlight when we get to 134, or is it okay to ask some questions?
No, just to say that both the ordinance and statute allows the city council to impose conditions that relate to substantive review criteria, and so with Eric's draft, he's up and indicated the applicant can read to these conditions.
So we have conditions set forth by staff in accordance with appropriate ordinance that the property owner has agreed to. This renewal is for a period of one year, correct?
Correct.
So if he's not compliant a one-year time from now, then we can look at further action from a city standpoint, correct?
Even throughout the license year, you see, one of the proposed conditions is for quarterly inspections, and so to the extent there's an inspection and there are issues, even, you know, three months, six months into it, if there are issues, that can be brought forward to the council as either a license suspension or if it's really bad violations of the existing license terms, potential revocations. You don't have to wait a year if there are issues throughout the license year is the point.
Counsel, are there any questions? Counselor Hawes?
One quick question. We have the staffing and ability to ensure these tests are done quarterly, as stated.
We can do that once every three months, yes. We can do that once every three months, yes.
Any other questions? Counselor Staples?
Yeah, so I guess I'd like to make a motion to include these amendments. Do you want me to read them off, or can I just say amendments one through six as noted in the council packet?
Or is that necessary as conditions?
Yeah, you don't need to read them separately, I think.
Okay.
Incorporate them by reference.
So I've got a motion on the floor for Counselor Staples for Articles one through six, second.
Yes.
Counselor Gary, okay. We'll take a motion, excuse me, a vote right now on the amendments, motion to amend. All those in favor of the motion to amend? All those opposed? One opposed?
No.
Okay, so voting six, one, the mo-
I'm in favor.
Okay, I'm sorry, seven, zero, the motion to amend passes. Okay, now we have their initial motion as amended by Counselor Staples, second by Counselor Gary. Any further conversation on that? If not, I'm going to ask for a vote. None being, all those in favor of the order as amended? Can pass this, seven, zero. Next is Order 20-09182023, amending Chapter 24, Article 2, Division 1, Section 24-33 of the General Assistance Ordinance, annual adjustment of maximum benefits. It's a public hearing, second reading, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Staples, Counselor Milks on the second. Open this up to the public. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak? So please step up to the podium, give us your name and address, and let me your comments, so about three minutes. None being, I'll bring you back to the council. Counsel, we do this every year, everything's in your packet. Are there any questions, comments, deliberations, none being, ask for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Oh, roll call? Okay, Sue, roll call, please.
Counselor Whiting.
Yes.
Counselor Hawes.
Yes.
Counselor Milks.
Yes.
Counselor Moran.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Staples.
Yes.
Counselor Gary.
Yes.
Passes seven, zero via roll call. Thanks, Sue. Next is Order 21-09182023, amending the code of ordinances, Chapter 14, Article 18, adult use of medical marijuana business licensing. It's a public hearing in first reading. At the September 18th meeting, this item was presented and postponed until tonight's meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Hawes, second by Counselor Staples. I'll open this up to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak tonight? If so, please step up to the podium and state your name and address, and let me your comments, so about three minutes.
Good evening, Mary Levesque, members of the city council. My name is Hannah King. I represent LZ 330 LLC and Mr. Fishman, who's 100% owner of that company. The company owns property at 213 Washington Road, it's an industrial warehouse. I spoke at the last meeting, Mr. Fishman, who's present tonight, did as well, I'm not going to reiterate that comment. I also circulated an email for tonight, but we're here just to object to the retroactive provision in the ordinance amendments. We understand that the council may want to change its licensing criteria or appeals process, but that process and those criteria have been in place for almost five years now. It's unclear to us why it would need to be retroactive to July 1, 2023. Mr. Fishman has a license that would be impacted by it, would impose criteria and allow this council to deny an appeal based on criteria that there's no way we could have known when we prepared and filed the license application. So what we're asking this council to do is, whether you approve or don't approve the ordinance amendment, or if you do approve the ordinance amendment, just to simply remove the retroactive provision from it. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak tonight? I will say that you went way under three minutes, which is shocking for an attorney. I had to say it, Hannah. So is there anybody else that would like to speak? If not, I want to turn it over to Sally, our attorney, Ms. Daggett. If you could, please give us some legal opinion on this ordinance, please, on the retroactivity.
Sure. The, this proposal to amend the-
Sally, get closer to the mic, I think press the button, too.
You want me to eat the microphone?
I know, I know. We can hear you now, though, it's more for the people.
All right, there we go.
Perfect.
These proposed ordinance amendments are to Chapter 14, your licensing ordinance, and they came across my desk because there is a pending application that was initially reviewed by city staff and was denied by a letter of the city clerk. And so the applicant had filed, has filed an appeal to the city council, but upon reviewing the ordinance with staff and myself, the article in your licensing ordinance actually says that licenses are supposed to be granted by the city council. And so the question was, should we clean up the ordinance just to make it consistent with current practice, which is that these are all handled by the city clerk? So these were, and the question was posed, well, do we want to pick up this application that got filed and got denied and has, you know, been appealed to the city council that also has an underlying land use issue? And your ordinance is pretty clear for licensing that no license can be issued to a business owner unless their use complies with the zoning ordinance. That's right in your general provisions in your licensing ordinance. So it poses this question of when there are multiple approvals that are needed from the city, be it, you know, the clerk or some other staff member or the city council, in what, what's the nature and the sequencing of that review of the license? And in most other municipalities that we dealt with, it's not, you know, not every single one, but it's pretty standard that the sort of city council goes last in the process and so that it can benefit from all the other staff reviews that might be involved in whether their planning board approvals or coenforcement officer approvals or any other sort of staff review that's needed, so that that all occurs before it comes, if it even does come, to the city council. So these proposed amendments were drafted to, to be designed to be housekeeping so that the licensing of marijuana facilities, be they on the medical marijuana side or the adult use side, that they'd be, continue to be done by the city clerk and not by the council, but there'd be an appeal, right, to the city council. But there were included, there wasn't a retroactivity provision included so that it would pick up this pending license obligation that's been denied in part because there's a land use issue. So, so that they can get that resolved before they come to you, otherwise they're going to come to you, they may get a, you know, they may or may not, their appeal may or may not be granted, but then they're still going to have to resolve this underlying land use issue. And the thought was, again, isn't it better for the council sort of, in whatever sequencing there's going to be, and whoever else is going to be, or whatever, either official or agency is going to be involved in reviewing this application, that the council sort of goes last? And so that was the intent behind the retroactivity provision, was to pick up this pending application and so that they would not, in a sense, sort of be on a fool's errand to the city council when there's an underlying land use issue with this particular application. And I've been in touch with the city clerk's office, and there are other pending applications, but none of them are for new licenses, marijuana licenses. They're all renewals that are pending. So this is, again, it was meant to be housekeeping and yet you could take out the retroactivity provision, but I don't think that's, frankly, this application that precipitated these ordinance amendments, they're still going to have this underlying issue and, you know, I guess they can come to you and if you don't approve this retroactivity provision, they can come for you on an appeal, and they're still going to have this other issue. So we're quite frankly trying to make it more efficient for you all, that you don't hear some appeal where there's an underlying land use issue that's, that you can't solve, quite frankly. So, so that's a long-winded response to why these ordinance amendments were drafted the way they are drafted. And I'm pleased to answer any questions. I will say that Maine law does allow, it is legally permissible, to have a retroactive applicability date, and that's what these are. There's a distinction that's been, I guess, described by the Maine Supreme Court, actually in a court case involving the town of Kittery, where we were involved on the town of Kittery side, that makes a distinction between a retroactive effective date versus a retroactive applicability date. And under your charter, ordinance and new ordinances and ordinance amendments go into effect five days after passage. And so that's the effective date, but what has been included in these proposed ordinance amendments to the marijuana licensing ordinance are, it's a retroactive applicability date, so retroactive to July 1, 2023, so it would pick up this pending application that says, you know, that, so that, again, it's not sending this particular applicant, you know, in front of you when you can't solve their underlying land use issue. And it was meant to sort of bring more efficiency to the process generally, but also to this particular application. And Maine law is also very hard-nosed on the issue of vested rights, and that is, you know, did this particular applicant have, they applied in July, are they protected against a change in law that may not take effect until October or even November? And Maine law says, yes, it is possible to have a change in law apply to pending applications because in, if, in this instance, the applicant does not have what are called constitutionally protected vested rights. They don't, they haven't received an approval and then in reliance of that approval, gone out and spent money in the field. And so, and again, Maine law is probably in all the 50 states, maybe in the minority of jurisdictions, but Maine's rule on vested rights are pretty hard-nosed. And in this instance, this applicant, yeah, they filed an application, but they do not have the right to have the law not change on them in this instance, under these facts. And that's just, anybody who does business in Maine knows or should know that that's the law of Maine on this issue of vested rights and changes in law.
Is there any questions specifically from Ms. Daggett?
The underlying land use problem, was that in existence at the time of their application?
Yes.
Any further questions? If not-
I have to say that I appreciate what the attorney, what attorney Daggett said. I'm going to vote against changing that because I feel that this person, they have a right to their appeal, and I appreciate that we're trying to make things easier on us, but I'd like that person to have, this isn't a land use question, this is of whether or not we're going to take away that person's right to an appeal on what it is, and we'll deal with that. So that's why I'm voting against the retroactive-
Any other comments for or against? If not, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote at this time. It's a first reading, too, we have a second reading after this.
Counselor Whiting.
Yes.
Counselor Hawes.
Yes.
Counselor Milks.
No.
Counselor Moran.
No.
Counselor Walker.
No.
Counselor Staples.
Yes.
Counselor Gary.
Yes.
Order passes first read, four, three. Next, we have public hearing on the partial discontinuance of Chestnut Street. I'll open this public hearing up, there will be no vote. Any members of the public that would like to speak, please step to the podium and state your name and address.
Joseph Mailey, still at 82 Webster Street. I come before you tonight in opposition for the closing of Chestnut Street. I've asked people why, I have not been able to get a straight answer or one that's fairly consistent. One has been brought up as being a safety issue. That street's been there for over 100 years. I've lived in the area for close to 40 years, and I am not aware of anybody being run over on Chestnut Street unless there's information that somebody else has. I think that takes that out of the picture. If it's a walkability issue, and I understand everybody's trying to get people to walk around, it's rather ironic that we're closing a street so that people going to the PAL Center can have front door parking. I think most businesses in Auburn that would like to expand would love to have that option of creating 16 new parking spaces at the drop of a hat. That concerns me. If it's a design issue, my understand, understanding is this project is still under design, is that correct?
We don't go back-
Oh, you don't interact, okay. So I got to read minds. Okay, no problem.
Just for, sir, those, those rules are predated, everybody in this council by generation.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not faulting anybody. But anyway, if the, if in fact the drawings are still on the table, there is not too many drawings that can be changed around a little bit. In closing, I would like to say, and this is my biggest thing, I get the sense that this is being done to merge the PAL Center with the basketball park, which is fine. However, that is a very large neighborhood issue, and I just don't feel that the neighborhood has been engaged at the neighborhood level. Last week, I attended a meeting for the Public Service Building. They did that by neighborhoods, which I found to be interesting considering this was not, there's been no public get-togethers to discuss this. This seems like it's a project on a few people, is a pet project, with as little input as possible from the general public, and I don't know if that's good, so. But anyway, like I said, I oppose-
Just, just so everybody knows, in general, this project, the details are on the website. It's been several community meetings over the course of approximately three to four years, so there, it is on the website, and we can direct you to that information as well at a lot of-
Where? Where have the meetings been advertised as far as sold meat?
Okay, well, I'll, we'll get that, maybe I'll ask someone from staff to send you the link or whatnot, sir.
Okay, I'd like that very much.
That's exactly all your answers, but it's all there.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public that would like to speak?
Stephen Beal, 575 Johnson Road. I'm not speaking either for or against the closure article or proposal, but would simply like to pose a question before a final action is taken on it. When this matter was before the planning board last month, the question was posed to staff whether or not there had been a traffic study done of the effects of closure of this street, and the response, if I recall correctly, was no, a traffic study had not been done. I think one should be done. The reason for the closure that's proposed is because it would increase public safety due to no vehicles on Chestnut Street. I think there's a public safety concern if you do close the street because Chestnut Street and its continuation, Parker Street, are the only way to get from Hampshire Street to Turner Street and reach access to the Lower Winter Street and Summer Street neighborhoods, which are more than a quarter of a mile of packed residential development. Now you have to go all the way up to the intersection of what Mr. Cousins has described as the busiest intersection in the state at Union Center and Turner to gain access to the Lower Winter and Summer Street neighborhood, or you have to go up Hampshire Street to its fairly dangerous triangular intersection with Golf Street, up damage a few hundred yards to Denison Street, and then come back down. That could take a public safety vehicle several valuable minutes longer to reach access to that neighborhood. And I think that a safety study or a traffic study should be done before there's a final vote on this matter taken. Thank you.
Before I close this public hearing, is there anybody else that would like to speak on this? None being, I will not close the public hearing. Next, we have a public hearing on the discontinuance and realignment of Miller Street. I'll now open the public hearing. Any members of the public that would like to speak about this, please step up to the podium, give us your name and address, and let me your comments, so about three minutes. And just so you know, Miller Street runs behind Roke Block right here in downtown Auburn, and it's contingent upon the Mason's Brewery construction.
My name is William Turner, and I live in Auburn on Shercoyne, but I also own the building on Miller Street, 176 and 184 Main Street, at the intersection where we're talking about. I don't have any problem with the realignment, however, it takes away some of my parking, and I've mentioned this to staff, and no one has responded. So I'm just here to say that before this is accepted, I need staff to talk to me about how we're going to deal with it.
No, Mr. Turner, that we're not voting tonight, which is- Now, Mr. Turner, that we're not voting tonight, which is great. I think staff heard your comment very well. You are in a butter and I think we'll have some answers to that. Is there anybody else that would like to comment? None being? Okay, I'll now close this public hearing. Okay, we're going to move on to unfinished business at this time. We have a public hearing on the CDBG Home Consolidated Annual Evaluation Report shortly called CAPER for the program of year of 2022. So again, public hearing, no vote, no action. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak? Please step up to the podium, give us your name and address and kindly limit your comments to about three minutes. Is there anybody that would like to speak on the CAPER program? I would highly encourage everybody to look at the CAPER program because it's very, very informative with regards to homelessness, asylum seekers, and other general assistance data points. I'll now close this public hearing. Next is order 22-10162023, amending the Auburn zoning ordinance minimum dwelling size. This is a first reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'm sorry, Counselor Staples, second. Counselor Whiting. Open this up to the public for comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this issue? Please step up to the podium, give us your name, address, and limit your comments to about three minutes.
I've heard this issue before. Is there a brief explanation on why the size of a dwelling is an issue?
In short, sir, we have to, we're trying to be compliant with new state law as well as closing what we have a donut hole within our ordinances right now that have a gap on allowable sized dwellings from very small to, you know, not so small, but there is a several hundred foot gap in the middle that we're trying to close.
Okay. The only reason I ask to clarify is I know having what they call them the mini houses, a lot of people finding that's all they can afford, so.
Tell you what, you've just got some talent. You're making me break our rules here by engaging. Congrats. No one can do that. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this before I bring them back? No? Okay, counsel? Questions, comments? Closing the donut hole? None? Ask for a vote. I believe this is a roll call vote. Yes, it is. Sue.
Counselor Whiting.
Yes.
Counselor Hawes.
Yes.
Counselor Milks.
Yes.
Counselor Moran.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Staples.
Yes.
Counselor Gary.
Yes.
Okay, passes 7-0. Next is ordinance 23-10162023, amending the Auburn zoning map, Area B, change from urban residential, senior suburban residential, and low-density country residential to T4.2B. It's a first reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Counselor Staples, second.
Second.
Counselor Hawes. Open this up to the public for comment. Any members of the public that would like to speak? If so, please step up to the podium and state your name and address.
Hello. My name is Kate La Mahoney and I live at 225 Vicarion Road. And like my husband said in his very passionate speech earlier, we are new to this community and we also are new to being homeowners. So city ordinances, planning boards, and public hearings are very new to us, but we're trying to be active participants. We're trying to pay attention and we're trying to, I guess, participate. So as he said earlier, we did, we fled our overcrowded and overpopulated city of Massachusetts and found our own little country oasis here in Auburn, Maine, right on Vicarion Road. We were so excited. One of the things that we considered when buying our home was that our neighbors all had to have large plots of land and that our area was a low-density country residential area. And to my understanding, which is very limited, that the minimum that each lot could have in that area was three acres. Couldn't be subdivided any less than that. That was something that was very appealing to us because where we're from, they just kept building and your neighbors were right on top of each other and that's not something that we wanted. So now with this rezoning, our beautiful country oasis seems to possibly be in jeopardy. Maybe not today, but maybe tomorrow. So while I'm all for change and progress, the section of Vicarion Road that you're trying to change is all privately owned plots of land. I just don't understand why the need to change it. You know, it is possible that you're just trying to comply with new state laws and legislations, which, you know, goes above my head, but I truly hope that you will not pass this area, this change for Area B to be T4.2B. And if that sways your vote, that would be lovely. So that's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Pam Rousseau, 745 West Auburn Road. It's really amazing to me that with 2,400 signatures about not developing Auburn into downtown Boston, that you still go forward with this just because you can do a small, you do a small change and run to put a B at the end of it. The citizens, your constituents, the people who are going to be voting on, I think it's November 7th, don't want this. And as Mrs. Dunn mentioned, some of you don't want it in your backyard either. And I think that we need to be cognizant that the people of Auburn that you are supposed to serve, whether you think that we elected you to do whatever you want, but we didn't. And so I ask you, stop. Please.
It's not jeopardy. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Okay, we're going to bring you back to the council this time. Counsel? Before we go in, I just want to make sure, there's just a couple of points. And first of all, welcome to Auburn. We, second, that petition that was circulated was not to change Auburn into Boston. That was not the title of that petition. So I will say that 4.2B has been in place now. Well, certain transacts, a form-based code have been in place in Auburn since 2015, if not earlier. It's been a slow process with good discussion, good public meetings, but I will say that you have to look at where this has already been in place for over a year and see if anything bad's happened. And we can't find it. We're seeing some more houses, but we're not seeing anything negative. And I will say that with absolute faith and conviction, but we also do understand people's concerns and if anybody does have concerns, I absolutely want them to reach out to staff to discuss that, what could happen to their land or their neighbors. Reach out to city council, reach out to myself. We're always here, just please reach out, we can talk about it. So with that said, counsel, comments, discussion? So first reading.
Quick question. Did planning board have any negative recommendations?
On this particular area, the planning board wanted to look at multiple options. What we first brought to them looked more like a strip zone. So we, upon their direction after the first public hearing, looked at different depths that would better follow the depths of existing lot lines along Vicarion Road, but would still provide connectivity between the Carrier Court, Vicarion Road neighborhood that was already part of the proposal and the area A that was changed along Vicarion South Main Street. They didn't want to see the sort of small island surrounded by other zoning. They wanted connectivity and consistency around that zone. So we brought them a couple of options. This did expand the depth somewhat from what we originally proposed to them, but they thought it was a more logical boundary to provide that consistency and connection between T4.2B zoning districts rather than having separation between.
Mr. Cousins, this was, just to refresh our memory, this is a council-initiated zoning change per the comprehensive plan?
It is.
Okay. I was sorry, council or planning board?
I believe this one was council initiated. I can double check that.
No, I think it was about eight or nine months ago, we sent it to planning board to review and give feedback. And so they modified it there, sent it back, and then they have just recently looked at it.
With.
With their modification request.
They're sending it back slightly with different boundaries than what was sent to them, yes.
Okay, good. I just think it's important for people to know that there's a process with multiple public hearings, just going back and forth, starting three and a half, four years ago now with the actual comp plan, comprehensive plan. Okay. Is there any other comments or questions on this? Do we want to have a discussion pro or against? Counselor Staples?
Yeah, so I guess I'm just going to ask on looking at the current zoning and to the proposed zoning, there's a little peninsula, I guess, of LDCR that isn't included in this. Could you just kind of go through the thought process there?
Yeah, and I don't, I can't go to choose a page here, but I think it's right around page 254 is where we have this item. There is a little piece, and I think you're talking about along Riverside Drive, that is a piece of a parcel that is mostly becoming T4.2B, but there's a triangle left over. We did talk with the planning board about expanding T4.2B all the way to the Turnpike and South Main Street, that area that would continue this area, Area B. The comprehensive plan recommends a slightly lower density in the majority of that area. So what the planning board wants to do, and they've directed staff to bring back a proposal, is beyond the boundaries of the T4.2B that you see in front of you, they want to look at a zone that delivers that eight units per acre density to fill the rest of that area.
You should have control there.
And I don't know if we need to see the map for that, but that's the reason that that was left off is so that there can be consideration given at a future date to another zoning district that isn't as dense as T4.2B. And I think it's this, this piece here is the leftover piece.
So basically, the LDCR there was an outlier and surrounded by higher density, MFS or urban residential and rural residential even is higher density than LDCR.
Yep, it is. So the board will take another look at can we craft a district that achieves the comprehensive plan's desired outcome of more density than what's allowed today, but not the full 14 units an acre that T4.2B attempts to achieve.
And I will say, I think it's interesting too, you have some people with, you know, concerned about their neighborhoods too, but if you look at that change from LDCR to T4.2B, we're really only affecting, we're not affecting that many lots and these lots are narrowish, if you would. They're deep, they're deep lots. So the road frontage wouldn't be there really for massive construction and there's already homes existing on the majority of those lots.
Most of the lots are salved.
So really, at this point, you're looking at the practicality of building a development or even another house deep inside of a back lot. Then it's the cost of running utilities and driveway, a shared driveway, if the road frontage allows, all the way deep into the lot. Am I looking at that wrong? Other than obviously on South Main.
No, most of the lots are developed and most of them are much deeper than they are width-wise or fronted-wise.
Okay. I say that because I think there's a pragmatic argument that we all have to take too. You know, there's a, you know, could, but would, and should, and really pragmatically possible to do any type of density in some of these lots as they exist. But Counselor Hawes, do you have something? If there's anybody else? No?
Well, I mean, if we're on the topic of hypotheticals, what could development look like in that area?
I think you'd have to look closely at topography and ledge. I think that side of the road slopes away from Vicarion for the most part, so you'd probably have to pump this larger lot, as an example. You'd probably have to pump sewer up to Vicarion to do any kind of a development, but most of them are developed with one or two family homes already. So it'd have to be a landowner that wants to do that as well.
Pragmatic.
Which having those pumps is a very expensive situation to have?
It comes with maintenance and it is more expensive than gravity, obviously. It's, developers are generally looking for gravity whenever they can find it for sewer disposal. It's not to say that it couldn't happen. This does allow for more housing creation, which I think was one of the goals identified in the, in the comp plan.
This is one of the things where I see where you're saying, I mean, if I was on the planning board and had to go back, if it was me, I'd say, no, the next progression, the next step for low-density country residential is rural residential, significantly lesser density. And that fits the comp plan as well because rural residential was part of that comp plan. Sometimes you can zone something all you want. It's wishful thinking. It's not going to happen nor should it ever happen, you know? But it shouldn't just, you shouldn't do anything just so it makes you feel good that you rezoned it. Does that make sense? So I know when we were on the comprehensive plan, Counselor Staples and I, we wanted to look at that natural progression instead of a jump from one house for every three acres to, you know, potentially 14 or 16. That's not a progression, but I'm just giving you some history on that. Is there any other comment on this or should I ask for a vote? Again, first reading, there'll be another reading. None? I'm going to ask for a vote at this time. Counsel, Sue.
Counselor Whiting.
No.
Counselor Hawes.
No.
Counselor Milks.
No.
Counselor Moran.
No.
Counselor Walker.
Abstained.
Okay. Counselor Staples.
Yes.
Counselor Gary.
No.
Order fails by vote of five against 1-4, one abstention. Next is order 131-10162023, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds and tax levy therefore for the proposed public safety building. This is a public, excuse me, public hearing and first reading. Passage requires an affirmative vote of five at the second and final reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Counselor Hawes, do I have a second?
Second.
Counselor Staples. Just so everybody's clear on this, we do, and I can let the manager explain more, but we do have to approve the concept of a bond prior to going to a vote. Of course, the vote supersedes any issuance, or any approval that this body may give. Mr. Manager, did I miss anything? Would you like to add to that explanation?
No, the, the purpose and the timing of this is based within charter. That's why it's coming before you have your first reading tonight, second reading next week, and it does provide for compliance with the city charter. I think there were questions, maybe I could answer that now. There were questions regarding, our document states up to 30 years for this loan. However, the financial statement, the interest is based on 20 years. The documents that you see in the information sheet is based on 20. We could probably run somewheres around three or four different types of scenarios that we believe could take place. We're trying to project what the actual interest over the course of this bond would be, but there are so many variables. The, the interest rate is one variable. When we go out to sell this bond is another variable that we'll, we'll need to make sure that we stay within these boundaries that we've created within the order. 30 years compared to 20 years, the city historically has never gone beyond 20 years, at least in the most recent, recent meeting, the last 30 years on anything that's greater than a 20-year bond. However, the bond council standard recommended language would be that you would provide for a language that would allow you up to the 30 years. The other scenarios that's not included in this is that we will most likely handle this like we did the high school and in that process, we saved a considerable amount of money by breaking the high school bond into two separate bonds. We most likely will do that in this situation as well. However, we won't know until we actually go before the bond council, look at the, the final project and determine what's the best approach moving forward. So we provided in the financial statement, based on the bond council's recommendation of what is most likely the interest for this bond moving forward. However, there are variables.
Okay. Any questions?
I'm sorry, one last thing.
Please.
It mirrors, it mirrors the way that we did this for the high school.
Comments to debate? Counselor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With, when I attended the second meeting, the assistant fire chief said that this probably won't be built for at least three or four years. If that's the case, will the bonding or anything else dealing with this come back to us as a council? Or is everything going to happen and it's all said and done?
The, once we actually are prepared to move forward with the bond, that comes back before you. The, and then the plans through this will come back before you as well. You'll, you'll be approving these plans before we, before we move forward with the construction. The multiple years is, you know, there's a lot of factors with this. We're finding that with a few projects that we're working on right now, finding contractors that could commit to the timeline that we're that could commit to the timeline that we're looking at. And the, this project is a multi-phase process where central, there's a, the building next to Central will be destructed, central fire station will be demoed, and then the addition to that new structure will be added. And so there is multi-years to this project.
If there's no other questions, I'd like to call for a roll call vote.
Point of order. Did we have a public hearing on this? I think we skipped that part.
Oh, I'm sorry, we did. Public hearing. Open this up to a public hearing. If there's anybody in the public that'd like to speak about this, thanks, Council Staple, Staples. Please step up to the podium, give us your name and address, and let me your comments for approximately three minutes.
Me again. I just wanted to say, and I don't know about the charter and all of that, but issues like this, we're only, what, three weeks away from elections? Issues like this should have been addressed publicly long before the ballots were printed and mailed out to absentee voters. Last-minute information that we gleaned from last week's meeting definitely made me rethink my position, and I'm sure I'm not the only person that that would happen to if they had all the pertinent information that was available prior, so.
Is there anybody else in the public that'd like to speak? I would like to encourage everybody, if you're here tonight, to grab some of the information that's outside the door, talks about the public hearings. And, Mr. Manager, just correct me if I'm wrong, there has, this motion or order provides no new information than was already made public in the previous votes to adopt the language on the ballot and so forth, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So there's no new information tonight. Now, all the information is the same information that's been out there for several years, okay, or months at the minimum. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this? None being, I'll close the public's comment. Bring it back in. Council, debate? Conversation, Council Staples first, Council Gary second.
Yeah, so I'll just say, just a reminder that there are three more public nights, public meetings to discuss this, where you can discuss, or you can learn about the proposals and see the presentations from city staff on this. I'll just say personally, I voted in favor of sending this to the voters because I think it's important that the voters get a chance to say this. I personally, I'm not 100% sure how I'm gonna vote on it, but I think that, you know, I think this is something that the citizen should decide. So I'm happy that we're going through this process, and I'll support tonight.
And we do have a charter responsibility for any large bonding in excess of 9% of our municipal budget, to send it to the voters so they can weigh in on that. So, I mean, the charter clearly stipulates our course of action on this. We do have, to your point, the next meetings will be on, there's a broken down by wards. We've had two public meetings already for wards one and two. But you can go, doesn't matter what ward you live in, go to anyone or more of these meetings. 10/19, October 19th at 6:00 PM, right here, City Hall, Council Chambers. Ward four, which is gonna be October 24th at 6:00 PM at the airport, okay? Just go right in the front door of the airport, it's right there, 6 o'clock on October 24th. Then at 6 o'clock on October 26th is Ward five. That's at the Sixth Street Congregational Church, 109 Sixth Street. 109 Sixth Street. This is all online, please look for it. Feel free, even if you don't live in those wards, go to those meetings. Much more questions and answer and data and pictures, everything else as well.
It's Ward three on the 19th.
Yeah, Ward three on the 19th, right. Someone said that you, yeah, Ward three hasn't, you're the Ward three representative, Ward three hasn't had their meeting yet. Yeah, it was Ward one and two first and second. Okay, with that said, is there any more questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, Council Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do fully support the concept, and I truly understand and really wanna do something to relieve the needs, to make sure all our firefighters, all our police officers get the best type of facility they can to keep their health intact and to provide whatever services they need to do for our public in their performance of their duty. But I cannot support such a high price. I mean, it's one thing if it's 48 million, but with extra interest compounded and stuff, and I know we'll probably retire it quicker, but it's still an awful lot of money to put on our Auburn taxpayers.
And this is already on the ballot? This has been printed, it's on the ballot? I just wanna make sure we're aware of that. Okay. At this time, I'd like to ask for a roll call vote. Sue?
Councilor Whiting?
Yes.
Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Councilor Milks?
Yes.
Councilor Moran?
Yes.
Councilor Walker?
Yes.
Councilor Staples?
Yes.
Councilor Gary?
No.
Order passes, vote of six-one. Next on the agenda is order 132-10162023, authorizing the city manager to execute a modified contract with Casella to reinstate curbside recycling. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we're gonna go, Council Staples on the first, Councilor Moran on the second. Correct me in the minutes next meeting if you'd like. Open this up to the public for comment. Any members of the public like to comment? Please step up to the podium. Give us your name and address, and if you could, let me your comments for about three minutes. Come on, someone. Okay. This is a big deal. City manager really briefed into this really nicely. There's been a lot of talk about this. Before we open up the council, I just wanna say one thing. I wanna applaud the city council that stood firm and voted to get this off of the budget this spring. It's a very difficult thing, but what you did is you allowed the city to negotiate from a point of, if you would, power with leverage, so we could go in there to the people of Auburn and for staying strong throughout this entire period till we got to this point. To the people of Auburn, I'm sorry that we couldn't tell you everything that we're doing, the process that we're going through, the negotiations that were happening until just recently. Because if we did, we wouldn't have been able to get a, honestly, the state's best curbside recycling program with the most well-rounded education and the most efficacy with regards to recycling in the state of Maine. So this has been a huge accomplishment, and I would like to specifically thank Ryan Wood and City Manager Phil Kroll too for taking this right along the finish line. It's amazing teamwork from the council to staff and, you know, and Casella too, for understanding that this is an important, you know, change in their whole business model. So again, you know, for all those who, in the public, I understand, you know, transparency is absolutely critical and important, but what actually does more harm, in this case it would have to our negotiating standpoint, and the end result of actually doing good for the earth, we had to do what we had to do. So thank you very much for staying strong on that. Any comments or debate on whether or not to authorize this or not? Council Staples. And then I'll come back to you, Council Whiting.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank all the city staff for the work that they've done on this, especially City Manager Grau. This is just, this is a great outcome. I haven't been overly happy with, you know, the way some of the recycling has happened in the last couple of months. I understand the mayor's viewpoint on that, and I think that, you know, there's definitely some merit to that, for sure. I'm really happy that we have gotten to this point. I'm looking forward to hopefully seeing a successful recycling program going forward. And I know that the contract is up for NRFP pretty soon here, so I'm hoping that we get to see some good stuff for 2025. But overall, just, this is a good outcome, and I'm really happy that the city's able to move forward on this, so.
I just wanna apologize to the city for the poor process that we used by jettisoning recycling in a last-minute vote on a budget hearing was poor practice on our part. Thankfully, the citizens rose up and corrected us, and we fixed it, thanks to the staff stepping up and correcting the political error made by this body, and I was part of it. So on my part, I apologize.
I'll say right now, it wasn't an error. The outcome is good, that is what matters. And you, Council Whiting?
Process was an error.
But, okay, I'm glad you stepped up and fixed that, Council Whiting. Is there any other comments on this before we call for a vote? Mr. Manager?
Just one last comment, I just wanna pass on. Thank you for the comments regarding moving this forward. I think our staff did a great job, they worked closely with Casella in this process. Also, the Sustainability Work Group and the SNRB both support the recommendation moving forward. They had their meetings this week, as Council Staples had mentioned, but I wanted to make sure I highlighted that they supported this proposal.
At this point, I'd like to ask for a vote, all those in favor? All those opposed? None being, passes seven-zero. Next is order 136-10162023, allocating up to $5,000 to the American Rescue Plan funds to provide public safety costs, police and EMS associated with the Special Olympics Maine Winter Games 2024, held at Lost Valley February 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Council Staples, second for Council Walker? Or is it Council Moran? You guys sound too much alike. We're gonna give it to Council Staples, so. Open this up to the public, comment. Anybody in the public that'd like to speak? None being, we'll bring this back. Council, debate? Anybody wanna speak against the Special Olympics? Didn't think so. Ask for a vote, all those in favor? Opposed? None, seven-zero. Last open session of the night. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council about any issue directly related to city business that is not on tonight's agenda. Please step up, let me, give us your name and address, and let me your comments for about three minutes.
Still, Joe Mailay, 82 Webster Street. I'm not sure if this is the format. I was hoping Eric was gonna stick around, but there's a quality of life issue going on in the neighborhood that I live in. Last year, early last year, my neighbor and I, we both confronted the city department about a house that's across, behind our houses, on Webster, on Hampshire Street, rather, having unregistered cars in his yard. His place basically looked like a scrapyard. I call it Sanford and Son's. We reached out to the permit people, they got involved supposedly, supposedly fines have been levied. I just drove by there the other day, and the place looks worse than ever. What's really painful, and for me anyway, about this situation is the fact that Mr. Wu has put so much money into the building that he owns on the corner of Hampshire and Oak Street. And just less than 400 feet up the street, you got Sanford and Son. That is not good city business, and I don't know, maybe you guys can talk to permitting and get to the bottom of the situation and have that rectified, because, you know, it's just ridiculous. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Ryan Smith. I live at 14 Weaver Street. I just wanna thank Council Whiting for his apology to the public, and I also wanna come up here and say it's absolutely baloney to say that that recycling mishap was nothing more than a mistake. It was a mistake made at the last second. I was sitting in the back row there, and I'd like to remind you all that these meetings are recorded. Your reasons for dropping the recycling program were purely political. The comments made that day were, oh, there are trucks driving around, that uses gas, that's not very environmentally friendly. I don't know if you guys remember that comment, but I do. I also remember the false statistic that only 6% of people use recycling, which is not true. It only accounts for 6% of the weight of what we provide to Casella, and that does not mean that that accounts for 6% of residents using the program. So that is absolutely not true. And again, these meetings are recorded, and we do have your statements and your reasons for dropping the recycling program. And it was a last-second decision that was in fact a mistake by this council. So I do appreciate Council Whiting for speaking up and owning to that mistake, and I am glad that the advocacy groups through the citizens, who I have personally met with, were able to step up and get that recycling program back for us.
Politics is alive and well. I'll close the open session. Going on reports, I have no report tonight. City council, any reports? None. Mr. Manager, report?
No report.
No reports. We're gonna move into executive session. At this time, thank you very much. We'll have no action items post-executive session, so we'll be adjourning directly from executive session. So without further ado, we have an executive session regarding economic development pursuant to 100 RSA 64056C. Premature disclosure would prejudice the competition of bargaining positions to the city. Do I have a motion?
Motion to move.
Council Walker, second by Council Haas. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Go to the bathroom.